We're going to get the meeting started. I will call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order 7:00 PM on Monday, September 28th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via teleconference. Tonight, the City Clerk Susan Lovering will lead us in the prayer and Alderman Harriet Gathwright will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with the Spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag.
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. For access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 876-80126610. The passcode is 195026. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall, the Nashua Public Library, and the Nashua Telegraph. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings. I am alone.
Alderman Cleve.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings. I am alone in this room.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone. I'm in the room alone and practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's order.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes, I am here. I am alone. I'm participating via telephone this evening because I'm having trouble connecting to the Internet. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Here, I'm alone, practicing social distancing and getting very, I can see everybody out.
Alderman Tanza.
I'm present. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I'm staying safer at home with my wife.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am here. I am alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Loz.
I'm here. I am alone and I too can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here. I'm alone and I hear the proceedings. Thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
I am present. I am in this room alone. I am practicing social distancing and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wilcher.
I'm here. I can hear everyone and I am social distancing and I'm home alone.
You're 14 in attendance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Also joining us this evening, I believe, is the Mayor. I don't know if Corporation Counsel is on.
Deputy Corporation Counsel Celia Leonard's here.
Thank you, Celia. As is customary with these meetings, I will turn this public hearing over to the Chair of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to be having public hearings on two different resolutions, resolution and ordinance. The first item is Resolution R20071, authorizing the Mayor and the City Treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $8 million, but two construction projects consisting of a publicly accessible ground-level parking garage, $2,500,000, and additional funding for the proposed Performing Arts Center, $5,500,000. I believe, Mayor, are you going to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I will be joined tonight by Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, as well as Debbie Novatney, who is Chair of the Fundraising Committee for the Performing Arts Center. I'm speaking in favor of the resolution because the Performing Arts Center is a project that will benefit everyone, benefit all Nashawans. And the reason for that is it will help us build a stronger economy, a stronger tax base, from which everyone will benefit. In addition, of course, for those who want to enjoy the Performing Arts Center, it's a quality of life issue as well. Then, building a stronger tax base, a stronger economy, we are going to help small businesses, which employ hundreds of people in our downtown area. Now, we're looking for additional money here because the project has changed since it was originally proposed several years ago. It is 750 now, 750 seats rather than the original 500. And the reason for that is that the experts we have, the operator, Spectacle Management, who operates performing arts centers throughout New England, has indicated that they can operate this center, Performing Arts Center, on a break-even basis with no subsidy if we have 750 seats. Also, it seemed to make much more sense to bring the Performing Arts Center to the ground floor rather than on the second floor and have a balcony. Now, what these projects, what the Performing Arts Center is already demonstrating is that it will help us build a stronger economy and a stronger tax base because it's going to attract private investment. As you stated at the beginning, Mr. Chair, one of the purposes of this bond issue is to build a private parking structure. And that would accompany, and that's ground-level parking, under what will be the school, school street housing. Now, the school street housing will be 140 to 150 units of smaller apartments, a little more affordable for many single people or roommate situations who want to live downtown. And it will, the tax revenue generated from the school street housing will pay not only for the parking structure underneath, but will also cover the cost of the additional bonding we're seeking for the Performing Arts Center right here. Now, Tim Cummings is going to report to you how this is going to be arranged in terms of a tax or an increment financing district. But the point is that the Performing Arts Center is already helping us attract private investment and build a stronger tax base. Because the developer of the school street housing, whose name is Peter Flokes, has indicated, has told us that the reason that he is investing what will be tens of millions of dollars in the downtown is because of the Performing Arts Center. Without the Performing Arts Center, this project probably would not have, would not have occurred. And this is exactly what we've been talking about. The, when the city invests in itself, in this case, a performing arts center, it will attract private investment in the downtown. And we know that the downtown is the principal area, one of the primary areas in the city where economic growth, where a stronger economy can be based. The project, the housing project will pay for not only the 50 space, private parking structure, our city parking structure, but also provide enough funds in terms of its tax revenue to pay for this additional bond. One additional benefit of the way that these projects are being designed and planned, looking to the future, is that will, the private, the public parking garage underneath will, will give us the parking in the neighborhood we need for the small businesses in the area who have expressed some concern about the loss of parking. If we go, as we go forward with this plan, we will also be able to add many, many street-level parking spaces and in the end suffer very small loss in terms of overall parking. So we're confident that this is just, that the school street housing is just the first project that will be attracted into Nashua as a result of the Performing Arts Center, is just the first tax money which will be coming as a result. Other projects will follow. And when we build this stronger tax base, what it means is additional tax revenue for services that benefit everyone, schools, police, fire, in every neighborhood of our city. So I think, Mr. Chair, that gives you an overview of the project and of what we're going to discuss tonight. And with that, I will turn things over to Tim Cummings, who will discuss a few more of the details.
Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chairman Dowd, and through you to the committee members. I'm pleased to be here tonight and to provide you an update and with the Performing Arts Center project. And I'm, I'm looking forward to tonight's conversation because it's been a long time coming. This has been a project we've all been working on over, over the last few years and, and it's been a combination of many efforts leading to, to this evening. So, thank you. I think the first order of business, if I may, Mr. Chair, is I'd like to share my screen and just do a quick status update on, on where we're at with the project overall. And at a certain point, I'd be looking to turn it over to, as the Mayor indicated, Deb Novatney, but before Deb Novatney, Rich Lannan. So Rich Lannan could, could say a few words. So, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Go ahead.
So I just shared my screen and the first elements, and I'm going to keep my comments tonight very high level. A lot of us here on this meeting have been intimately involved with this project. So, so a lot of what I'm doing tonight is I'm just going to speak in very high-level terms and obviously touch upon what I think are the important elements. But I'm going to try very hard not to get into the weeds. Over the weekend, I was given some great advice and counsel by a member of the Board of Aldermen, who I won't name, Brandon Loz, who made it very clear that I know this project very well and, and I get, sometimes I get lost in the details. And that's the last thing I want to do in terms of confusing everyone. So I'm going to keep my comments at a very high level, but of course, happy to answer any questions. So with that being said, the, the design is complete. So we've had our architect working on this project for over a year now. This summer, we got to 100% construction documents, and those documents have been transferred to Harvey. Harvey not only is going to be developing cost estimates, but they've sent the project out to bid. The bids were due last week and they are formulating the plan to get to us in terms of cost estimates. We're on track for the 15.8 million figure, which we had been originally anticipating. Total project cost is just under $25 million. This is something we've discussed, you know, from time to time, both with status updates here to the full Board of Aldermen and at the Steering Committee level in terms of the differing elements we've incorporated into the design and how that has progressed the project into, into the direction that we are now. Relative to program, not a lot has changed. We have secured Peter Lally, who's actually on the call this evening. As our operator, we're under a memorandum of agreement. We're going to need to switch that over to an operator services-type contract. I've included Spectacle Management's website in this update for folks at their leisure to, to be able to go to and kind of see and get familiar with them. But they're a very competent, incredible operator. They, as the Mayor alluded to, has, have operated venues across New England very successfully. And more recently, we sent around an op-ed that he authored that was in the Union Leader, I believe, or maybe the Nashua Telegraph. I'm not 100% sure. But nonetheless, it was a piece that outlined, you know, Spectacle Management's commitment to the project and how they're working, especially during these times of COVID-19, which I am proud to say they are very, they are very well-grounded and able to perform and they are doing well despite the challenges in front of them. And they have a plan that will allow us to be successful as, as, as this project gets online. So I've given you a cost estimate. I've talked to you about design. I've talked to you about the program. Probably the one most important thing you guys all want to hear about is fundraising. And what I thought would be best on that is I am going to hand it over to Rich Lannan to talk a little about, a little bit about the efforts of the Capital Campaign Committee. Rich and Deb, after you say, the update, if you could turn it back over to me, I would appreciate it. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to hand it over to Rich Lannan.
Mr. Lannan?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Chairman Dowd and Tim. As I think people know, I'm, I am the Chair of the Steering Committee, also the President of the Nashua Community Act, which is the 501(c)(3) nonprofit for the Capital Campaign and on the Capital Campaign Committee as well. You know, I know there's been a lot of interest, obviously, from Board of Aldermen and the public of where we are at with fundraising. And we've talked over and over again over several months or years, last year and a half, about the quiet phase that was necessary to be in. But we feel that it is very important now, and I think we owe it to the Board of Aldermen and the public to announce this evening where we're at. And that number where the Capital Campaign Committee has raised to date is $1,523,500. So that's, you know, that's where we are to date. That's before even going to the public phase and a lot of other things. But I want, I would like to turn it over to Deb Novatney to, as Chair of the Capital Campaign Committee, to probably go into a few more details of where we're going from here. Any other comments that she might have? But yeah, we're pleased to, to let everybody know what that amount is. So I'd like to turn it over to Deb if I could.
Yes, Deb? Ms. Novatney?
Oh, she's there.
Might be on mute. Is she indicating that?
She's there.
Let me see.
That's why she's not coming through.
I don't know if she's on my phone.
I believe she is.
Phones are muted, so if she can hear us, she's on mute.
Star 6 will unmute.
Can you, sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yeah, but that's you. Yes, we can hear you.
This is me. Sorry. Thank you, Chairman Dowd. I didn't realize, I unmuted my phone. I didn't realize I had to do anything else. My name's Debbie Novatney. I live at 65 McKenna Drive in Nashua, New Hampshire. I am an employee at Enterprise Bank. My expertise is in commercial lending and underwriting, which includes a deep understanding and skill in analyzing financial statements and forecasting business growth. And my passion is in helping small businesses succeed. I am really excited about the progress of the fundraising. But I wanted to first take a second to explain why I decided to join the Capital Campaign Committee. I first looked at the project from the perspective of a Nashua resident that loves the arts and music and was really looking forward to having the opportunity to attend a venue like this right downtown. But at the same time, my professional side also evaluated the project for what it really is, not an expense, but an investment in the economic growth of Nashua. Not many residents know that where the Performing Arts Center will sit at 201 Main Street is a U.S. Census tract deemed a qualified opportunity zone. It's the single most low-income census tract in the state of New Hampshire. That is why we are qualified for the tax credit program. When the New Hampshire CDFA granted us the 367,500 NCDFA tax credits, they stated, "The Performing Arts Center is one of the driving forces behind New Hampshire community's strong, resilient, and vibrant places. This project renovates a vacant building, providing a strong economic benefit to the local community through downtown redevelopment, access to arts and culture, and job creation," which goes along right with what Mayor Donchus was saying. Also, this project is slated to be completed in late 2021, early 2022, and the timing of the project is actually perfect. It will provide construction jobs now, and it's going to be ready for the pent-up demand from both performers and audience that is projected by the live entertainment industry for early 2022. I hope this helps you understand why I and so many other people are both personally and professionally passionate about bringing all of the benefits of the Performing Arts Center to Nashua. So what we're doing now is we continue to follow up with a number of large donors who have expressed interest in supporting the project. We are working on starting the public phase. That public phase of the campaign, part of it is we plan to sell naming rights for all the seats, and that has the potential of raising over $700,000. We will be, we also have eight, we've had about 176 personal, small business, corporate, and foundation donors to date, and we have about 855 people who have liked our Facebook page. So we are confident that we can meet the $2.5 million goal of the Capital Campaign. Finally, I want to thank the Board of Aldermen personally for the support and the confidence and the patience that you had with us, with the entire committee, as we worked with major donors to get through the private campaign, the quiet portion of the campaign successfully. I urge all of the members of the Board to join in the passion and positivity we've seen from our donors. And we truly believe that this project is going to help to invest, to support the investment of the pandemic recovery, as well as the future prosperity of Nashua. Thank you.
Director Cummings, are you going to take it back now or?
I am, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I stopped sharing my screen and I'm happy to put my document back up if, if it's so pleasure, or I can continue on with just my closing comments. I'm not sure what the pleasure of the group may be. I think sharing my screen may be helpful just for another minute or two.
Okay.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, Shashana?
If I could just request that Director Cummings also sends that along for our discussion in the Budget Committee meeting.
Say that again, you want?
I'm asking him to send us the document so we can have it while we have our discussion after the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Director Cummings, can you do that and then email it to the Board?
Yes, of, of course. Happy to, happy to send this along. I know it will become a public document and, and it will be attached to the minutes. I will also make sure that any member who's interested can have a, have a separate copy emailed to them. So, if I may, Mr. Chair, you know, I guess for, for just one second, I want to just take a moment and thank and recognize the entire Capital Campaign Committee, along with the leadership of Debbie and Rich. They've done a great job and they have done yeoman's work to, especially during the times that we're under, to bring us to a point where we're at, you know, about 60% of our goal. Our goal is 2.5 million. They're at, you know, about 1.5. And that is definitely something to be, to be celebrated. With that being said, though, that is only part of the conversation this evening. I'm sure the next question folks want to, folks want to dive into is the, is the new market tax credit. So I'm going to pivot and talk a little bit about our financing and as we, as I move this presentation forward. So, new market tax credit update. So overall, there had been some misinformation reported. I'm not exactly sure where that came from, but nonetheless, we are very much working with Mascomah Community Development. They've given us a verbal commitment of approximately $2.8 million, which at the end of the day will translate into about $2.5 million. So we are, we are well on our way in terms of the new market tax credit. There are some conditions and some details that we're still working out. And this has been, you know, a conversation we've had in earnest over the last two weeks with Mascomah. And I wouldn't have been able to do it without Celia Leonard or Neil Cannon. Both of them have been very helpful to me as we advanced this part of the funding plan for this, for this project. So I'm hopeful that we will continue to have these positive conversations with Mascomah. They are committed to the project under the condition that we close the transaction this year. And if that's the case, we will net $2.5 million again for, for this project. So how does that translate into our overall financing plan? So with 15.5 million of already authorized money through a general obligation bond, if the Board so adopts the TIF bond that is before you this, this evening with hopefully a positive recommendation out of this committee, you'll be at 5.5 million or about 21 million. And then with the local capital campaign on target to make 1.6 million and the new market tax credit at, you know, 2.4 or 2.5 million, we are well within striking distance of making that $4 million private sector commitment that was made when we first endeavored along to making, to making this project happen. So between the, the local capital campaigns efforts, the new market tax credit, we are, we are targeting a $4 million. And that will allow us to move forward with that $25 million project. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm going to just stop right there and talk a little bit about the legislation that is before you this evening. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen now. And I'm happy to, to pull up some other documents as, as may be necessary, but I don't want to necessarily have documents up when I know folks like to, to see the screen and, and and, and, and be able to see people. So, so I don't want to unnecessarily share my screen. But essentially, the, then my closing comments on this is you have before you now two pieces of legislation. One is relative to actual, the, the adoption of the, the TIF district. The second is the authorization for the, for the, for the eight million dollars. I wanted to talk a little bit about, about how TIFs work. And so what a TIF is, is the capturing of the increment above the base taxes or the base valuation that the general coffers or, or the general fund receive. You take that dedicated increment and you apply it to certain priorities, certain goals, certain objectives. In this case, we'd be looking to capture about a half a million dollars of tax revenue, and we would be dedicating it to very specific projects. And this would only come about because of the project that is actually contemplated or, or being, being brought to fruition. You oftentimes do these types of project, do the, do this type of, of municipal financing. This is a tool that is readily available to everyone to help in about projects such as these that we're, we're talking about this evening, parking, reinvestments in your downtown, a performing arts center, sometimes operational, you know, expenses as well. So I have a chart that I could show, show to everyone exactly what it is that I'm talking about, but I don't want to necessarily pull up a document. So, so, so I'm not gonna do that unless I start getting questions. This document I had sent to a previous Board of Aldermen back in two thousand and eighteen, I, I gave a memo on how do TIFs work, and I'll be happy to send that around again, and it gives people just basic, basic information as to who, what, where, when, why TIFs. TIFs are used and the mechanics of how, how TIFs are put into place. Relative to this specific TIF, we are looking at eight million dollars is about, just about four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in debt. That will be a hundred percent covered by the, by the School Street project itself. You, of course, we would also need the, to, to include the nine hundred thousand dollars that would be coming from the direct appropriation, as a direct appropriation, that would be coming through the Master Development Agreement to help with some cash flow matters upfront. But nonetheless, this, this is a tip that would be self-supported, and it would not take any additional taxpayer money to, to effectuate this transaction and to make this happen. That's one of the reasons why we looked at using TIF to help move, move both projects forward. How or why did we decide to use TIF? It became abundantly clear as we were continuing with the School Street Development Project this summer that there was a lot of neighbors and abutters who were interested in preserving the parking along School Street, and we understood that. We also knew that we needed to move the development forward. And so a creative way of doing that was to, to institute this TIF. It's, it's one of the reasons why we have this type of tool at our disposal. And it was at that time that I thought killing two birds with one stone may make sense. And so I recommended, knowing that the developer was a big supporter of the Performing Arts Center, and one of the reasons why he was interested in this project to begin with is because of the investments we were, we were making in the downtown, that we look to structure the tip so we could do two projects at the, at the same time. So I've heard some questions about timing and, and whether this would be able to be done in time, and I think we can, we can make the timing. I've heard questions about the mapping and how we structured the map. I, I structured the map to be as concise as possible to try to keep it as, as, as tight, if you will, of a district and not to make it too expansive. And I, I think I'm gonna leave my comments there and happy to answer any questions that may come up, Mr. Chair. But I think ultimately, the one thing that I, I want to just again reemphasize is we, you know, we have, we are in striking distance and have the four million dollars in hand, dedicated on some other additional developments occurring in short order. It looks as though we would be able to start the Performing Arts Center under construction if it's the pleasure of this board right after the first of the year. So, thank you.
Okay, before I open it up to public testimony, are there any Aldermen that have questions for any of the presenters?
Mr. Chair, can I just give a quick conclusion?
Sure. Mayor?
I just wanted to thank everyone who's been involved in this project, especially those who've been raising money. Rich Lennon and Debbie Novotny, who've raised a million five hundred plus thousand dollars before the public phase, and Tim Cummings and Celia Leonard, Neil Cannon, who have worked hard to secure the new market tax credits. Together, the private fundraising, again, even before the public phase, and the new market tax credits total the four million dollars or within a hundred thousand if they don't, if they don't reach it. So I'm confident we'll reach our four million dollar goal. And of course, we can't proceed with the project unless we do, but things obviously are looking very good. So I want to thank everyone involved.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Are there any members of the Board of Aldermen that have questions for any of the presenters? I don't see anyone.
Alderman Lou, Mr. Chairman, has her hand up.
Alderman Lou? We can't hear you. Must be on mute.
She is. I think she might.
I can, we can hear you now, yes.
Okay. I wonder, the only question I have is I thought that we would be able to know that the tax credits were, I mean, the tax credits seem a bit fuzzy. And this two point five, or five point five million dollar bond seems to fill, fill an amount that was originally not predicted. So I, I'm concerned about the, you know, the understanding of the public about this. You know, you know, I'm, I'm jumping around to different desks, so it's really hard for me. I wish I could speak more, more clearly, but I, I don't know when I log into the meeting where I need to have my paperwork. So I just think we should consider that it would be nice to know that the tax credits were, were definitely received. I, I'm not clear on whether they are, and
Why don't we get the answer to that question first?
Okay.
Director Cummings?
Yes, I can, I can confirm for you that the tax, the new market tax credits are imminently in hand and, and subject to the fact that we close by this year, which is the biggest condition Mascoma has put on us. We are, we are in receipt of a new market tax credit of what would not be more than two point five million dollars.
Follow up, Alderman Lou?
Yes, please. I also, I, I mentioned in my communications with you, I, you know, I wish for these situations we could have, we could know what questions everyone had asked. So you mentioned there were a lot of questions, but yeah, I kind of wish there had been a public forum to know the questions that you were asked personally. But I'm also concerned about the, the TIF district because this whole concept came up very late in the process. I had not heard of the TIF district plan until recently, and I have some questions about how that works going into, like, for thirty years after this is established, but that's all.
All right. Any other questions from any of the Aldermen?
If I may, yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure it's understood, and I don't have the date in front of me, but I'm gonna suggest it was in the last week in August. I know Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt was on it for a few minutes, but I held a new market tax credit forum, actually. So, so members of the Board of Aldermen and the public and anyone else who was interested in this had the opportunity to actually ask questions at that time. So I tried as best I could to create the types of environments to get everyone's questions answered in a public forum, as well as I'm always available for questions with one-on-one type conversations.
All right, thank you. I saw Alderman Tenza, then Alderman Lopez, then Alderman Jettie. Alderman Tenza?
Thank you, Mr. Cummings and maybe Mr. Fredette as well. The note that we got for the TIF legislation says that the, the average annually for this bond is gonna be about a little four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, but that it's undeterminable whether the TIF would be able to cover that, those payments for the first two years. Is, am I correct in assuming that then it's the general fund that has to pay that, pay the four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, or how, how does that work?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Director Cummings, you want to answer that or Treasure Fredette?
Yep, it, yes, if I, if I may, because it goes, and it's upon the finance team's recommendation. What we would be looking to do is part of the School Street Development Project calls for the city to get an appropriation, to get an amount of money of about nine hundred thousand dollars. We would take that and appropriate it to the bond for the first couple of years to, to make sure that we were, we were covering the costs until the, till the value is fully realized on, on the project.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Tenza? You have a follow-up?
I do, I guess I have a follow-up on the, on the other end of the bond, because hopefully at some point the bond exceeds the four hundred, or the, the taxes collected exceed the four hundred and twenty-five thousand. You know, twenty-five years into the future, I think it's a fairly reasonable assumption. So there's no, correct me again, there's no plan in this TIF that if the proceeds exceed the amount of the bond, that the excess proceeds go back to the general fund. They would still go into this TIF district for, I guess, further investment just into this area, correct?
Director Cummings?
I, yeah, thank you. I'm gonna check and confirm what I'm about to tell you. But it is my understanding, and one, at any time, we could, we could, you know, repurpose the funds. And I, you know, so we could, you, you know, you can do that at any point in time. But I'm, I'm pretty sure we structured it in a way that will allow for the excess funds to actually go to the general fund. Once we cover all debt, principal and interest, the intention is, is to have all the excess revenue to actually go into the general fund. And that's typically not, that is common and not atypical when you have a project-specific type TIF, which, which this is.
Answer your question, Alderman Tenza?
I did. Thank you very much.
Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, for Director Cummings, I just have a quick question, but I guess a comment too. I noticed that you got a new market tax credit, which I was extremely skeptical of, so I definitely owe you a congratulations on that. But it was not the, the larger amount. I thought we were talking about four point six million, maybe six, and at one point, numbers might be completely made up. My question is, have a TIF. Congratulations. That's good. Is there any possibility we can still get? I'm sorry, I'm saying TIF and I mean new market tax credit. We have a new market tax credit. Is there any possibility to get another donor before that window closes?
Director Cummings?
Thank you. I know the Capital Campaign Committee is working fast and furious to try to bring in every dollar that they can. We have, we have tentatively scheduled a closing on December fifteenth. So every dollar we raise, you know, between now and then, and there could be some large donors that still come in, you know, would be, you know, would be our goal and what we're striving towards. I can't commit to the fact that any new donors are gonna appear beforehand, but just because we reached the new market tax credit and just because we've achieved that four million dollars criteria, does, does that mean that, you know, the group of dedicated people working on this are, are gonna take their foot off the gas pedal? I've been so impressed with the leadership of these community volunteers who are really passionate about this project. They've had curveball after curveball thrown at them, and they've managed to figure out a way to keep moving this project forward. Even in the times that we're in right now, to even be having this conversation is, is, I think, really truly a sign that we're, we're heading in the right direction. And I think we, you know, we're, we're at the top of the, top of the hill now, and, you know, I think we should really be pleased with how, how we're doing. So I, to answer your question specifically about new market tax credits, you are absolutely correct. We were originally looking at a four million dollar type of new market tax credit. The world was a lot different two years ago. The market has changed substantially. We are, I think, very fortunate to be able to have the, the, the new market tax credit in hand that we do have. And so it's my recommendation to proceed. Ultimately, costs are gonna continue to go up. And so, you know, if we wait, all we're gonna do is see the project cost continue to go up on the other end, and we'd be chasing our tail to some degree. This was a comment I made actually a couple of months ago to Alderman Ben Clemens, when he, you know, he and I had this kind of exchange, and, you know, we're talking about ten percent. And, and at the end of the day, typically, construction costs can increase year over year by something of ten percent. So, you know, it would really not be wise to do, and if we want to do, if we want to do this project, we should do it now.
Okay, so just to make sure that I'm clear in what your response was. My impression is despite people like me being Eeyore and saying, "There's no way, you're, some, something is gonna happen, and there's no way you're gonna raise the money." Not only do you raise new tax credit money, you have the ability and there is the opportunity this is to further donate to that, of the new tax credit. And the strength of the project is also borne out by the other part of it, where, again, I was on the no-way train that said, "No way you're gonna be able to raise private funding and donations of this amount," but not only are they doing it, they're doing it in spite of the team. So their private donation fundraiser part, which I guess is maybe the key part. There's the fundraising committee's activities and then the tax credit. And not only is the fundraising committee knocking it out of the park completely, but there's the opportunity for investors who want to be a huge, a part of this and get the visibility of being, you know, large donors, but the benefits of new market tax credit, they can still get in on the, get in on this. Is there a process for them to contact your office about interest in that?
Director Cummings?
Thank you. So if you, there are absolutely ways for people to still get involved in the project. They should be contacting the Capital Campaign Committee. Deb Novotny and Rich Lennon are the two key individuals that I would recommend that someone speak to, to be able to, to, you know, get involved if they have an interest in getting involved.
Is there a particular type of business that you would think is, should be most aware of what new market tax credits are and that they may already have the ability to apply for this or benefit from this?
Oh, okay. Actually, so to be clear, yeah, I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez. To be clear, the way the new market tax credit program works is once you are given an allocation, you have to go find the investor. So over the last few weeks, you know, that's what we've been working on, is finding someone to actually buy the credits from, from, from us that Mascoma is, is, you know, giving to us. They have the legal ability to give to us. And so that's what we've been working on. Now, we didn't start out on this path, but after many conversations, it, it looks as though, and I'm pleased to say, that actually Mascoma wants to be the investor of the tax credit as well. That's how much they believe in this project. So not only are they giving their allocation, but they are actually gonna buy and be the investor of the tax credit so they can reduce their own business.
Are they, are they utilizing the full amount of allocation that we have?
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
Okay.
And that's, and that's the way the project works. That's the way the program works. The investor buys 100% of the allocation.
All said, Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the, sure that those two differences were clear.
Okay. All right, thank you. Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm, I'm sensitive to the, you know, the fact that this is a public hearing and I'm assuming there are members of the public that want to speak and ask questions. And I'm, I'm also assuming that the, that Director Cummings and Attorney Leonard and Deb Novatny and Rich Lanin are going to be available to the committee after the public hearing is concluded. So if, if my assumptions are correct, I'll save my questions for the committee mayor meeting and let the public ask their questions during the public hearing.
Director Cummings, I believe you're all gonna be available, right?
I can't speak for Rich Lanin and Deb Novatny.
He's, he's pointing his head's going in the right direction.
So yes, yes, then, yes.
All right. And we also have two items that we have the public hearing on, so we're gonna be going right through them. And we get to the second one that's related, so I'm probably not going to have, unless they want to speak again, the presenters. Alderman Cleaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to understand why we're combining financing of the Public Performing Arts Center with the project associated with School Street. To me, they're very, very different projects, different pros and cons, different concepts entirely and not related. Except for both are in Nashua. I don't understand why one piece of legislation is dealing with both, financing of both together, and it makes no sense.
Who wants to address that? Director Cummings?
Yeah, thank you. So the answer is twofold. First, when you create TIFFs, you know, you, you, you can do them and have them be project-specific. And that's what this one sort of is. It's a little bit more of the traditional sense in terms of, of having it broader than one project. And I really wanted to make it broader than one project, so it could support the downtown more holistically, which is why the Performing Arts Center was, was included. So it's more of a philosophical, you know, idea of using TIFF to redevelop your downtown or redevelop a certain portion of your community, which, which this absolutely does. Then, second to that, but just as important, both projects wouldn't move forward unless the developer was willing to, to, to do the project. And the developer, you know, and I can, I can share it with you, you know, provided us with a letter saying that, that they very much wanted the Performing Arts Center in the city of Nashua. And the reason why he originally got involved with the project was because of the Performing Arts Center coming. And so it made sense to just create a structure where we could do both at the same time. And that's what, and that's what ultimately is, 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 is happening here, is just allowing us to be able to do both projects, which are both priorities through that, through the TIFF.
Follow-up, Alderman Cleaver?
Thank you. The, the implication being that without School Street, Performing Arts Center is not going forward. And I, I, I fail to understand the logic behind that.
Director Cummings?
We wouldn't be able to make the timelines that, you know, the Mascomma has, has asked for us to make, to get the New Market Tax Credit. We wouldn't be able to have the $4 million of, of non-city money available and we wouldn't be able to, to, to move the project along. So everything builds on top of one another. I don't know how often I've been saying this to various folks, that this is just a, you know, how, you know, it's, it's, each side is working to build towards a certain end goal, and that's how this got structured.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab, and if I'm wrong, somebody can clarify, but I, I think that the person that's involved in building the School Street Apartments believes that if the Performing Arts Center is in place, that the city, the downtown will, will be thriving for many years to come. And that increases the probability of, of his investment being very successful. So I, I think that's where they tie together. And to make one successful, to make the other successful, is, I think, what they're striving to achieve with this legislation.
Mr. Chair, could I add to that just a little bit?
Mayor, go ahead.
Yes, so we've said from the beginning that the Performing Arts Center would attract private development. And in fact, it's already done that. The developer has said the reason he decided to go forward with this is because of the Performing Arts Center being close by. And to demonstrate the point that private investment will ultimately pay for the Performing Arts Center, this one project is going to pay for this additional bonding authority. And that's the connection, that private investment, that this developer decided to go forward with the School Street housing based upon the city's investment in the Performing Arts.
All said, Alderman Cleaver?
Well, put, put another way, I'm in full support of the Public Performing Arts Center. Full support, and I, I believe it's going to be invaluable to Nashua and Nashua residents. Fully support that project. I have very serious questions, however, about School Street. And I, I don't think they should be combined for those reasons. They're, they're very different, as I say. And they're very different ideas and concepts that have nothing to do with each other. I understand what you said as far as financing and public support and private financing and attracting businesses and so on and so forth. But to me, they're very, very different and should be considered separately.
Okay, are there any other Aldermen that have any questions for any of the presenters? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, gotta jump in fast. Alderman Clemens?
Thank you. Yeah, my question is, is related to the the bond payments, and I wanted to make sure that this was clear and understood. The bond payments for both projects. Let me ask this question in a very specific way. How many existing Nashua taxpayers will be paying for this project? Can anyone answer that question? How many existing Nashua taxpayers will be paying for the, for this bond?
So if I'm understanding, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I'm understanding the question correctly, how many existing Nashua taxpayers would be paying for the 5.5 bond, the TIFF bond? The answer is none of the existing Nashua residents will be paying for it. It will be solely supported by the future tax dollars of the School Street Development.
Thank you.
Okay, all said, Alderman Clemens? All right. Alderman Lou, did you have a follow-up, or is it something that would wait till the budget meeting? Can't hear you. Says your phone's on mute.
Oh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
Well, that question, I, I mean, you don't really know. I mean, how do, how can you answer that question as none of them? Because people that will be paying for the bond are people that own the property going forward. They may be the same people, they may not. But how can you say none of, no one, none of the current owners will? So I just, that, to me, that answer doesn't make sense. So could you help me understand it?
Director Cummings?
If I may, yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think the question specifically was existing residents, existing taxpayers. And that's, and so that's, that's one. And then, two, the, the whole purpose of a TIFF is to be able to isolate the expenses of a certain capital project typically and be able to segregate it and then use the revenue stream available, typically a future project, that allows for an increment to be created, to then be dedicated to pay for said expense, which means that the project itself, or the development itself, or the property itself that is subject to the, to the TIFF would then be able to, to finance the, the, the bond that's, that's authorized.
Can I follow up?
Follow-up, Alderman Lou?
Well, sure, but there will be taxpayers that are paying those taxes, right? And they're not necessarily gonna be different taxpayers than exist today. So I, I don't understand how you say, how, how you gave that answer that no, no current taxpayers will be paying towards the TIFF.
I think it's clearer if you look at it as current properties. The properties that are being built will be the ones paying. Yes, somebody from Nashua that owns another property could move in there. But those properties don't exist yet to be taxed. And those properties in the School Street Apartments, now, when they're taxed, will be paying for the TIFF. Not any other locations in Nashua that are current taxpayers.
Follow-up, please?
Follow-up?
Well, I know one, one parking lot is going to be developed. But hypothetically, there, there will be captured value in the other parcels in the TIFF district that will also be earmarked for the payment of bonds. So it doesn't seem like we're talking about the same thing. I'm not only talking about School Street. There are other properties in the, in the TIFF proposal, which any appreciation that happens becomes earmarked for development within that district. And so unless there's a change, and, and those are mostly, many of them are buildings that already exist. There are, there are improvements on, on the parcels. So most of them are currently have owners, and we don't know that the owners are gonna change. So how can you say that none of those owners' tax payments will go toward the TIFF, toward the bond payments?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I try really hard not to answer hypothetical questions or scenarios, because you can kind of go down a rabbit hole. But I want to try to answer the question here. So there's two specific reasons why. One, there's no, no new value being created in the other properties. Most, most of them are built out, the improvements are there. So you're not gonna really see any incremental change in their properties. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm saying I'm segregating it to the School Street site itself. And then in addition to that, and we started on this comment earlier, or I started making this point earlier, which is any excess funds are gonna get reverted back to the general fund in the TIFF. And so that's, you know, something that we, we, you know, I want to make clear is the, is what we're trying to do here.
Follow-up?
Mr. Chair, can I raise an order, please? We are well down a rabbit, this is a public hearing. Can we let the public speak?
Yeah, we, I think these questions probably ought to better be handled when we get to the budget meeting, where we're actually talking about the legislation. I, usually, we just let the Alderman ask questions to clarify something the presenters said. We don't want to get into too much of a debate or, or get into too much detail. This is a public hearing and, you know, we're looking for public testimony, so I'd like to proceed with that. There are no objections.
I'm here.
Okay, so now, again, the public hearing is on R20071, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $8 million for two construction projects consisting of a publicly accessible ground-level parking garage, $2,500,000, and additional funding for the proposed Performing Arts Center, $5,500,000. I will now take testimony in favor, and I ask you to try and limit your, your comments to three minutes. If it gets over three minutes, when it gets to five minutes, I will definitely move on to someone else, because we have 52 people on the, on tonight, and, and we do have to get through two of these public hearings. So would any member of the public like to speak in favor of R20071?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay? My name's Brian Grepp. And I am a resident with my wife at Ledgewood Hills. We're constituents of Alderman Jettie and neighbors. And really, really pleased and proud to be here to speak in favor of this project. And we've been residents of Nashua for four years. We actually moved here from Boe, New Hampshire, where we lived for 25 years and raised our family. I will tell you that I started my career here in downtown Nashua in, in 1982. And it is really exciting, and I speak for my wife. We really are very excited about what we see, the energy going into downtown Nashua right now. I will tell you that I worked for Bank of America, and I was really pleased to have an opportunity to meet some of you at a reception that I know the chamber held to help our company, which I'm very proud of, announce a $250,000 grant to this project. And I will tell you in the years that I've worked for the company here in New Hampshire, that is one of the largest single commitments that the foundation has made here in New Hampshire. So our roots for the company are here in Nashua. Many of you recall Indian Head Bank. And our roots date back in New Hampshire to Indian Head Bank. And we have three banking center offices and employees here in Nashua. In fact, one of them is right in downtown, that I think many of you know, which is just right down the street from the future Performing Arts Center. So we are really, really pleased to be part of this. We're proud of it. I also just want to give credit to the mayor for his leadership in town, Tim, and frankly, all the volunteers that are working on this has taken a lot of vision. I can also just briefly mention to all of you, as, as you're working through these issues and asking all of these appropriate questions, I had the good fortune of serving on the Board of Trustees at the Capital Center for the Arts in Concord, New Hampshire, back in 2001 to 2007 period, actually two consecutive three-year terms. And I will just say to all of you, having been part of that amazing organization, if any of you have had an opportunity to be in Concord recently and seen what has happened to downtown, it is just an amazing story. And I can remember being part of that board and hearing conversations about what needed to happen to the Capital Center for the Arts, the investments that were happening, a lot of the same questions, frankly, that I'm hearing here with this project. And looking today, what has become a beautiful story in, in, in Concord. So I would just assure all of you, by the way, that it has been an amazing place, center for not just businesses, but it is education leaders, nonprofit leaders have been part of that board, but also part of being able to take advantage of that amazing facility in Concord. So I see a lot of the same energy going into this project in Nashua. And I just wanted to be able to take a moment personally, on behalf of our family, just to thank all of you that have been working so hard on it. We see a lot of energy. I happen to find, and I'll just, I'll close with this, we happened to find an article that was in Money Magazine. This goes back to 2018, I believe. But it really speaks very, very powerfully for the decisions that you're being asked to make and why you're making them, right? But this article came out, I think it was in December of 82, that said, quoting, "Nashua is the best place to live in New Hampshire, according to a new survey." Money Magazine said it is selecting the quote charming gate city for the top spot due to its up-and-coming downtown recreation options in proximity to Austin. So all of that is certainly playing out right now. And I'm certainly here to speak personally, but I can just say also, working for a company that has working for a company that has made what I think is the lead commitment, um, we're really proud of what's happening here and we support Nashua. And, uh, we wish you all good luck in making this really important decision. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Yes, Alderman Dowd, I'd like to speak in favor, if that's okay?
Yes, certainly, Mike.
Hi, Mike Appleberg. I'm the president of the United Way of Greater Nashua. Um, you know, we're not an arts organization, so you might think it odd that somebody from the social service representing a social, social services agency would speak in favor of an arts project. However, as we did three years ago, when the project was first conceptualized, I'd like to reinforce that we are strongly in favor of this project. Uh, you know, the study by the American, by Americans for the Arts shows that the arts have a seven to one return on investment in a, in any community. Now, seven to one is a big number, and of course, that's an average and a generalization. But what we do know is that arts have a strong positive return on investment. And that return in our community comes in the form of, you know, improved talks, property values, increased tax revenues, a downtown that's more vibrant vitality in the community, and just a general improvement of the quality of life um, for for our community. So you know, I'm just going to reinforce many of the comments that Brian made previously. Um, we, we, you know, believe that the right rising tide really does raise all boats. And in our community, we'd really like to see this art center come to fruition because it will ultimately benefit all of us, and we appreciate that. And thanks again to the, uh, Capital Committee in in particular. When this project was first conceptualized, uh, we were a little concerned about what it meant to build a four million dollar capital campaign in the, in the middle of a number of other very significant capital projects in the social services. But, um, it does appear that they've been able to do their work without negatively affecting some of the other projects in place. We appreciate that as well. That's all I have to say, and thank you so much. We hope you, uh, support this.
Okay, thank you. I see, uh, Kate, Lesko?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Lesko. I'm the president and CEO of the Greater Nashua Chamber of Commerce located at Four Water Street in Nashua. I'm here tonight on behalf of the chamber, our board, and our membership to speak in support of the Performing Arts Center and the economic impact that will have on the Greater Nashua community. Using methodology from the Americans for the Arts Economic Impact Studies, by year three, the Performing Arts Center will generate over three point five million dollars in annual spending and create jobs. This projected economic activity can be measured and will create a hundred and thirty five direct and a hundred and thirteen indirect jobs. It will also increase vibrancy in Nashua's downtown by decreasing Main Street vacancy rates by at least twenty percent, attracting seventy thousand audience members to downtown by year three of operations, and increasing investment in upgrades by downtown property owners worth at least ten million dollars by year five of operations. In addition, it will provide a tool for employee recruitment and retention for regional employers. Having had a previous role running Stay Work Play New Hampshire, encouraging twenty and thirty year olds to stay in, come to or come back to New Hampshire, and working with businesses statewide, and now in my role with the chamber, one of the things I heard then and continue to hear most often is the need to attract and retain talent in our state. And especially when it comes to a younger generation of up and coming leaders, quality of life, culture, and community investment all rank very high. And all of these are components of the Performing Arts Center. So the chamber and our board on behalf of our membership stand in support of the Performing Arts Center. And thank you for your time. And thanks to everyone who has contributed to the project thus far.
Thank you. Uh, I have someone named James.
Him Rafferty from the River Casino and Sports Bar?
Hey Jim, how you doing?
Good, old man. Thank you very much for the, for the time. I'll be short. Uh, you know, I got involved with this project because my concerns over how the school street, um, building would, uh, harm our current parking allotment down in Off High Street. Uh, I, my concerns were shared with the Lafayette Club and the Polish American Club and Barbara Holmes and Ace Hardware. I don't, I'm not speaking for them tonight, but they all shared the concern that taking those eighty eight spots out would seriously affect the ability to, uh, compete. Um, you know, we met with the mayor, uh, several times, Tim Cummings. Uh, Alderman, where so many of you were very, very helpful. And we came, it came forward with this proposal to lift the building and change the allocation from rather than losing eighty eight spots, that we would have fifty three spots underneath the building, which we believe is a serious step forward. And we really appreciate um, the efforts of the city and the Alderman to help us. Uh, the expansion of, uh, the tips zone into the embracing the, um, the art center was a natural, I think. Uh, we are, I certainly, my business that I can speak for is in downtown, uh, Nashua because we believe in the art center, we believe in the, um, the, uh, ability of these things to work together to make a more powerful, uh, customer attraction. So we're all in favor of the TIF and we want, I wanted to, uh, come here and I appreciate the time to express that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not see anybody else with their hand up. Is there any other member of the public wishes to speak in favor?
I would like to speak.
Mr. T Boom?
Yes.
Glad to see you.
I'm glad you got control over this, uh, public meeting. I thought you had lost it. Uh, my name is Fred T Boom, and I reside at twenty four Cheyenne Drive. I'd like to speak in favor of our twenty oh seventy one, especially specifically the five point five million dollar additional funding for the Performance Arts Center. As many of you know, I was very much against the original Performance Arts Center proposed by the web study for many reasons, at the least the death trap design of placing the performance data on the second floor of a building. Furthermore, the original estimate for the project included an unsubstantiated low bulk building construction cost estimate of eleven point five million dollars that ignored totally the detailed professional estimate by Fantasy Consulting, who was hired specifically to conduct a web study cost estimate, and that came to sixteen point four million dollars. In other words, the pack, the project was underfunded by five million dollars at its very beginning. But that's when wonderful things happened. The city contracted with the outstanding, the England architectural firm Icon Architects. Icon immediately dispensed with the death trap second floor design concept. And through many iterations, working productively with a pack steering committee. Attended a number of those meetings, came up with a very, an exciting and very versatile design. The city also contracted a spectacle management, an experienced theater manager who agreed to operate a pack for one dollar a year. Thus eliminated the need for a four million dollar endowment fund to subsidize operation. With one condition, and that the seating capacity of the theater be increased from the five fifty seats in a web study to seven fifty seats to make the pack economically viable for the operator. The total project that's presented tonight now stands at twenty five million dollars. There's four million dollars anticipated from tax credits and private donations. And with the city's original five, fifteen, fifteen point five million dollar funding, this project is still five point five million dollars short. Nearly equal the five million dollar deficit of the original budget that I originally, that I earlier mentioned. Given the current detailed design state, construction can and should be contracted for guaranteed maximum price with the construction manager, our reconstruction, a very competent uh, organization. One final note I'd like to make, I am now an elderly citizen. And speaking for the seniors, we need a comfortable and convenient place to go. We do not go to discos, or we, we don't go to many private parties to meet and mingle, but we pay a lot of taxes. With its rooftop terrace and variable configuration from intimate black box theater to a fifty seat grand theater to a thousand standing room concerts to private banquet with close parking access, this venture, now designed and proposed, ready to be constructed, is ideal for us seniors. And I intend to purchase a season pass. I therefore urge you to adopt R twenty oh seventy one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. T Boom. I have Lisa Ork. Lisa?
Can you hear? Sorry, I think I'm on mute.
Yep, okay, good. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Lisa Bissonette. I work at thirty Temple Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, uh, for a real estate development company. Uh, and I'm also the chair of City Arts Nashua, which is an arts nonprofit here in Nashua. Um, I wanted to speak in favor of, um, the issue before you this evening. We have been enthusiastic supporters of the project from the very beginning and have followed all of the progress that Mr. T Boom just outlined, um, with interest and and with support. We would love to just commend the city of Nashua, the various vendors and consultants that have partnered with Nashua, and most especially the capital campaign committee and all of those volunteers who are working so hard to raise the money and who have had tremendous success in doing so in pretty difficult circumstances, especially now. Um, we totally understand how TIF, uh, increment financing works. We've seen it successfully used many other places and honestly have wondered why it hasn't been more utilized in downtown Nashua. So it's great to see that creativity and that idea come forward. Um, I love to see that, Tim. Thank you for suggesting that. Um, and, uh, we really would love to see this happen. We're eager to roll up our sleeves and get it done. And I'm looking forward to, uh, buying a season pass as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I have Rich Lannan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I have a question if it's okay. Uh, I received an email just as the meeting started uh, from a Nashua resident that was planning on speaking. It's short. If it's okay for me to read his email into the meeting minutes?
Sure, you want to give his name and address?
I, I will do that. That's how he started it. So he made it very clear. He may have emailed it to the Board of Alderman. It does say, Dear Board of Alderman, my name is Philip Sconces. I live at fourteen Ashland Street, Ashland Street, Nashua. And I operate Sconces Fine Julian Home Decor located at one sixty nine to one seventy three Main Street, Nashua, established in nineteen twelve. I'm writing this letter regarding your vote for the additional funding and support of this very important project for our city. As I have stated before, the Performing Arts Center will not only help rejuvenate and ma- and maintain vitality of our main corridor, it will help our city as a whole. The careful planning and the successful fundraising efforts are, are proof that this project is well on its way to being the success we all know it will be. Through the years, numerous consultants have come up with master plans for the city of Nashua, each and every one of them, a Performing Arts Center has been strongly recommended as a key component. We are at the cusp, and with your vote, you will allow this to happen. Be the founding fathers who made this project reality, um, a reality. Nashua and the citizens for generations to come will thank you. Thank you for your time. Conciliate Philip Sconces. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Judy, Judy Carlson, I see your hand up, your real hand.
Yes. Oh, I forgot. Yeah, I was supposed to do my other hand.
Yeah, I'm looking at the list for other names, but go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, my name is Judith Carlson, and I live at fifteen Manchester Street. I've been a resident of Nashua since nineteen seventy three, raised my daughter here. And, um, uh, I've been very active in the arts for the last ten years after retiring from working for a large computer companies and advertising and public relations. Um, what I'd like to say is, um, I'm on the Arts Commission and last year and the year before, in preparation for the Performing Arts Center and have some baseline data, we worked along with some of the other arts organizations in the city to do a, uh, economic impact study through the American for the Arts. Now, both Mike and Kate have mentioned American for the Arts. They do all sorts of, uh, data on it and every five years do a survey of the economic impact of the cities that participate. And Nashua has never participated in the past. We got the results back and Nashua's, um, the economic impact of total expenditures both by the nonprofit arts organizations and its audiences, and Nashua came in at just a little over eleven million dollars, eleven million two ninety nine. Now compare that to Concord as, um, where they have both the Capital Center for the Arts and the Red River Theater, they came in at thirty one million, one eighty five, three sixty six. So, and you can say Portsmouth, okay, you can say Portsmouth also has a lot of people who come there because of tourism. Uh, they came in at fifty eight million, oh four one, six five nine. They also have two performing arts centers there. So it's really quite evident by data that a performing arts center does make a huge economic impact, um, on the communities where they exist. I'm also like to just read a couple of other statistics from the American for the Arts on the surveys they do. Eighty seven percent of Americans believe the arts and culture are important to the quality of life. Eighty two percent of Americans believe the arts and culture are important to local businesses and the economy. Seventy three percent say the arts are a positive experience in a troubled world. And sixty seven percent Americans believe the arts unify our communities regardless of age, race, and ethnicity. So I would just like to say that, yes, I've been supporting this project from day one. I've been on the steering committee. And I'm on the Capital Campaign Committee as well as National Community Arts. And I think all our efforts are well worth this, and we're all passionate about it. And we hope that you will vote in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, David West, did you?
That's me.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my name is David West. I'm a lifelong resident of Nashua. I haven't been involved in, uh, the performance and promotion aspect of local music since the nineteen sixties. Um, and I obviously speaking in in favor of this, but primarily on the ground level uh, level of this, I'm speaking for performers uh, that perform locally as well as schools and other organizations that are really looking forward to having some kind of, uh, a, a place where we can have as a central aspect to, uh, the performance, uh, scene in in the Nashua area. Also speaking on behalf of the local theater groups, uh, who have struggled over the years with the same things that we have, that there's really never been a place to play in Nashua. And so basically, that's the, the extent of my statement is that we do hope that, uh, we can be represented in this new venture and that we think we can bring a lot of, uh, life and activity to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, I have Jeff?
Hi, how are you? Hope you can hear me okay. Um, Jeff Voice, live in Nashua, New Hampshire, longtime resident.
Can you give you a full name and address?
Uh, Jeff Boyce, I live at sixteen Hadley Drive in Nashua, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
I'm also the owner of Stella Blue, which is a small business, a restaurant in downtown Nashua. Uh, today I prefer to speak a little bit more as a resident, unless as a business owner. Um, I think we've covered that. Um, as I mentioned, both my wife and I grew up in Nashua, lived in Nashua my whole life, with the exception of, you know, a few years of college and a few years in San Diego. Um, both my children, eleven and thirteen, go to Elm Street Junior High, so very invested in the community and fully support the Performing Arts Center. Um, you know, people have spoken a lot about the increased quality of life. Um, I agree with that. I also um, believe that this type of venue increases diversity, both diversity in thought and diversity in culture. And I think that truly breeds innovation in any city. Um, as I think as we see now more than ever, people are starting to work closer to home or actually in home. And there, where they live is becoming more important. or actually in-home, and there, where they live is becoming more and more important, and I think remaining competitive in that regard is important to Nashua. I don't want Nashua to be defined by Hammer Street and D W Highway, big box stores and chain restaurants. I want it to be, I want it to be more, so I think the question is really, can we afford to, it's really, can we not afford to invest in this type of endeavor? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, Director Cummings? We know you want to speak in favor of it.
That's good. I'm Mr. Chairman, I just thought maybe I, if I could, I could write, read the letter that the School Street developer submitted. I've already forwarded it around to the members of the Board of Aldermen, but I didn't know if you'd maybe want me to read it for the minute, to incorporate it into the minutes?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So Peter Floats, managing partner of Lance Boeing Melbourne, sent a letter on August 10th, 2020, and he starts out, Dear members of the Board of Aldermen, I first wrote a letter for a Nashua Performing Arts Center in the summer of 2008. I even closed it for your review because I believe then, as I do now, that a performing arts center is a good strategic investment that will improve the greater Nashua community. As a real estate developer, where I put my own money into a deal and take the associated risk, I look at communities where I see the community's investing in itself. I am very selective as to where I will do a project, and I am asked all the time by various communities to look at deals and projects. More often than not, I turn them down. One of the reasons I originally chose to work with the city of Nashua is because I heard about the idea of a performing arts center being established in Nashua's downtown. Fast forward to today, I understand there is a gap in the total project cost for the Performing Arts Center, and relative to the project I am involved with on School Street, and a concern has risen about a loss of parking spaces. I would be happy to pursue a School Street project without the parking supplied on-site, but if Nashua would like to see parking on the first floor, I would be happy to incorporate this concept into the proposal. It would be my request that you pay for these public parking spaces through a TIF, and if you are going to do a TIF, you should incorporate the Performing Arts Center project into the TIF district. That way, this project can move forward as well, and the future tax laws of this project can help close the project gap and make a difference, can help the project pay the difference. Thank you for your time, and I continue to look forward to working with the city of Nashua on improving the downtown for everyone's shared mutual benefit. Signed, sincerely, Peter Floats.
Thank you, Director Cummings. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of R 20071? I don't see anybody with their hands up on the list. Anyone who wanted to speak, please speak up.
I'd like to speak, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, oh, okay, go ahead.
If everyone can be okay, this is, my name is James Tobin. I'm the director of leasing at Brady Sullivan Properties, large private equity development company headquartered in Manchester, but with a large holding in Nashua, and speaking specifically on behalf of Loft 34 at 44 Franklin Street. The owners of the company, Shane Brady and Arthur Sullivan, who are publicly donors and have participated as part of the Capitol Campaign fundraising efforts, wanted me to read a letter on their behalf, absolutely in favor of the project itself. So it starts out, To the City of Nashville Board of Aldermen, as many of you know, Brady Sullivan Properties recently rehabbed the Franklin Street Mill Building and converted into a residential community, as has been done with many several historic mill buildings throughout New England by our ownership group. Perhaps less known is our continued acquisition of over a quarter million square feet of commercial office property in the Gate City. These developments are a clear testament to our confidence and commitment to the community in which the constituents here tonight live, work, play, and shop. The decision to seize an opportunity to acquire a sizable share of both the commercial and residential market in the city came from the belief in the people of Nashua and the sense of community. Today, we firmly believe that the addition of the Performing Arts Center in Nashua's historic downtown would be another major step toward neighborhood revitalization and the ever-important civic attraction to the areas between Exit 1 and Exit 7 and 8. Nashua undoubtedly has the infrastructure to support the PAC. Companies on a local level continue to grow, while Massachusetts-based businesses have begun to look more seriously at the benefits of operating in tax-free New Hampshire. Even those who work in Massachusetts-based cities north of Boston are setting residential, settling residentially on this side of the border. Between Clock Tower Place, Cotton Mill, and our new development on Franklin Street, the number of businesspeople, shoppers, and diners is increasing exponentially year after year. The ripple effect of strategically implementing this type of attraction is undeniable and would be universally beneficial for what is truly a great American downtown. As committed members of the passionate Nashua community, it's our sincere hope that the Board recognizes this unique opportunity presented here in what is without question a paramount decision in the history of the Gate City for the future of the Gate City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this? Seeing and hearing no one, I'll move on to testimony in opposition. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
Laura Cahoon.
Excuse me?
Laura Cahoon.
Can you give me your name and address, please?
It's Laura Cahoon at 30 Greenwood Drive.
Okay.
I want the mayor and the city officials to know that this PAC is going to be, go down as the biggest pink elephant in Nashua, and a lot of Nashua taxpayers do not want this project. I feel sorry for all residents, especially the young couples, because they will not be able to live in Nashua because the residential tax will go up so high that they will not be able to pay their property tax. But apparently, the mayor and the city officials don't care. As far as the garage, I think the builder is the only, is only coming to Nashua because they found that our mayor would build a garage for them on the taxpayer, Nashua taxpayers' dime. This clearly shows that both the Nashua, the mayor and the city officials don't care what Nashua taxpayers actually want. $31 million for a PAC and $2,200,000 for a garage is not what we want. I oppose both projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? I don't see anyone on the list that has their hand up electronically. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing no one, I'll move on again.
I did. I rose my hand. Sorry, Mr. Alderman Dowd, I had my hand. I'm not sure why it didn't appear.
Yeah, because your picture's.
I've got raised hand up, so I'm not sure.
Can't see you. Go ahead. State your name and address for the record.
Right, thank you. The name is Bob Keating, and I'm a member of Granite State Organizing Project. In a way, I'm actually speaking in support that the Alderman should have received a petition that was signed by 28 residents of Bronstein, and we're very specifically linking the Bronstein project with the School Street project, which is outlined in the petition, and specifically that we're not speaking about the performance arts funding, and I certainly agree with what Alderman Cleaver said about separating out the two functions. The $2.5 million was not in any original proposal. It only came at the time when the Butters said, geez, we're concerned about the loss of the monies, the loss of the parking spaces. So we believe that $2.5 million would be better spent not to assist the private development, but in a variety of other ways, including within, for affordable housing. I think it doesn't make sense to be spending money for people who can afford market-rate housing when we have many people who cannot afford market-rate housing. If a development is built in the School Street plants, flats, it should be built so that families from Bronstein could live there, which means there should be apartments of three, four, and five bedrooms in development, and the building should be done in terms of timing, that it should be built first so Bronstein families could move directly from their homes. They could stay in their neighborhoods. There will be a speaker, Fauston Shortley, who is a resident who went door-to-door to get signatures about this proposal, and I think he will speak eloquently about what I think all of the Aldermen and, like that anybody could imagine what it's like to be needing to move when it's not your choice, and for many people in Bronstein, that has been a fact of life many times for them, that we think this is a wonderful opportunity to, for the city, since they own the property, you know, to work with the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority in a way that will make the easiest transition as possible for the residents of Bronstein. We just think overall, the city has spoken many, many times over many, many years about the need for affordable housing, and here is an opportunity for us to do something. It's ironic, we're speaking about parking because for Bronstein, as many are aware, under the new proposed 216-unit one, there will be 100 less parking spaces there than would have normally been allocated, and that was a variance. And here we have the differences here, that there was sufficient political voices to get an influence, to, you know, to make some changes, but we just think that $2.5 million is not a good idea, and at least from what I understand here, there actually is upfront cost because the property is going to be sold for $900,000, and that's the revenue that's going to be used initially to pay for the bond, the interest on the bond. So we just think this is an opportunity for the boards to get together with the residents and try to do something to make things easier for the people who are making the greatest sacrifices for other people to have houses. So that's my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition, R 20071?
Fauston was going to speak.
Yes, I see he has his hand up. Fauston?
Good, thank you.
Name and complete address, please.
Greetings, everybody. My name is Fauston. I'm a resident here at Bronstein, and I was just here to speak about the plan about destroying the Bronstein buildings. I'm originally from Rwanda, in a refugee camp. My parents, they're from Congo, where there was a genocide and everything, and they had to move around too much and everything. So they heard that there's a plan, destroy the building, that they're going to separate everybody everywhere. They were really concerned. They didn't know what to do until one of the members from GSOP, whose name is Bob, Bob Keating, came and gave us an opportunity to petition, and I went on to help him, go door-to-door, asking everybody about their idea at the School Streets, School Street Flats, that they're going to build the large buildings. We thought it would be a good idea for them to build it first, so we can move there, and it'd be closed, and there wouldn't be a lot of changes. Kids would stay in the same schools. Everybody thought that idea was a good idea, and everybody was so excited about it. And according to when we talked with everybody, it seemed like they were all concerned about moving everywhere, moving all kinds of places. So this is why everyone, almost everybody, signed a petition to, perhaps if the Alderman agrees, which is why we're here to ask you, they can have us, they can have the School Streets built first, and we stay there as they destroy this place and then rebuild it, so whoever wants to come back should return. So I was just here, Bob told me about this opportunity to come and speak about it, to see if we can ask, because we had to try something, and we found that there's an opportunity that we can have a voice, we can have choice to come and ask, and perhaps somebody can agree with us and help us to move to this School Street. So pretty much, that's all I had to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Fauston, for your input.
All right.
Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing no one, I'll move again to testimony in favor. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing no one, once again, testimony in opposition. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing on R 20071. And I'll open the testimony for O 20030, adopting a Tax Increment Financing TIF Development District under RSA 162-K and NRO 295-11, the School Street TIF, and a Tax Increment Financing Development Program and Financing Plan for the new TIF. I believe that we've already had testimony from the city on exactly what that covers, unless there's an Alderman that would like to get any more information on that particular subject rather than waiting for the budget meeting in a couple of minutes. Seeing none, I will look for testimony in favor of R 20030. Seeing and hearing none, I'll move for testimony in opposition of O 20030. Seeing and hearing none, I'll move again for testimony in favor of O 20030. Seeing and hearing none, I once again move for testimony in opposition of O 20030. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on O 20030, and we'll close the entire public hearing on O 200, R 20071 at O 20030 at 8:47 PM. Alderman O'Brien, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to adjourn by roll call.
The motion on the floor is to adjourn by roll call. Alderman O'Brien, would you call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman O'Brien votes yea. Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman woman Lou?
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman woman Harriet Cathright?
Yes.
And Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, 15 yays, 0 nays.
We're adjourned at 8:49 PM, and we'll be going directly into the budget meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Clerk may. Okay.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie here. Can we take a five-minute break before we start?
We'll take a five-minute break. I'll start my clock, and we have, we'll reconvene in five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, 15 yea, 0 nays.
We're adjourned at 8:49 PM, and we'll be going directly into the budget meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Clerk may. Okay.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie here. Can we take a five minute break before we start?
We'll take a five minute break. I'll start my clock and we have, we'll reconvene in five minutes.
I'm here. I can hear you and I am alone.
Alderman Tom Lopez?
I'm here. I can hear you and I am alone.
And Alderman Lodge David Tenza, the PETC Chairman?
Present. I am alone and I can hear everyone.
Mr. Chairman, all present with 10 members present.
Thank you. We also have Director Tim Cummings, David Fredette, Treasurer of the City in Ashwa. We have the Mayor Jim Donches. And I don't think I see John Griffin anywhere. So is there anyone else I'm missing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to include Alderman Cleese.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Alderman Karen.
And Alderman Karen, excuse me.
Thank you.
And Alderman Lou, can you see me?
Yes. All right. So let me get that. Alderman Karen? Alderman Harriet Gathright? Now, do I have everybody? The additions are Alderman's Cleese, Karen, and Harriet Gathright. Do I have that?
And Lou.
And Lou. Thank you.
And Alderman Cleaver.
And Cleaver.
Alderman Lou and Alderman Cleaver. Thank you.
All right. So first item is public comment. Is there anybody that didn't speak during the public hearing that would like to address the board? Seeing and hearing no one. Communications?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before us, from Day Fredette, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Reason, Bond Sale Plan, and Depth Service Analysis by the General Fund.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place them on file. Unfinished business?
Mr. Chairman, there is none.
None. New business resolutions?
Before us this evening is R-20-071, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $8 million for two construction projects, consisting of a publicly accessible ground level parking garage, that's $2,500,000, and additional funding for the proposed Performing Arts Center at $5,500,000. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a mo, a motion to recommend final passage.
By roll call?
By roll call. Thank you.
So this discussion on R 20071. Is there anyone that would like to discuss this motion? Oh, Alderman Wilshire.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. After the public hearing, I was really, really gave a lot of thought to how we've gotten this far. And I really need to thank Director Cummings for his hard work on this, keeping things on track, trusting in the process for getting the new market tax credits, believing in this. You know, you had the, the capital campaign. They worked really hard, I think. And, and this, you can't take this for granted. I mean, people have been working really hard to make this a reality. It's, it's been a long time coming. I'm going to support this. And I wanted to give a shout out to everybody who's been involved and has done the hard work to keep this on track. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez?
Hands up. Yeah. So I know that at times, I was initially very supportive of the Performing Arts Center as a concept and enthusiastic about the, the opportunity for an economic anchor downtown, particularly after Alex Huestor's move away. There were definitely points at this, in this process where I really doubted it. And it didn't seem feasible. After the presentation, public hearing, acknowledgement that we're getting some market credits, we do have a move forward, and the addition of the, of the whole development project for School Street, I mean, pending this board's decision and approval, I feel like we're in a much better place now, which much more holistically reflects the needs of that area of general development. Because downtown, we, we need amenities to help people attract younger people and citizens downtown to spend money. We need as a community gathering place, but we also really need housing, and we need to be attentive to the people that are living there. And while the School Street lot isn't exclusively low income housing or public housing, the way that I would have personally preferred, we do have those projects underway that are somewhat being, that are, I don't even know the word, they're, that are complementing this project. And this particular plan does allow for the parking that the housing brands in the area need to continue. I'm thinking specifically of Mary's Place, of Delaina's House, of the Harbor Care Clinic, the local stakeholders that were initially very, very raising a lot of those, those concerns. The city worked with them, helped to strap, to compromise, you know, what their needs are against the needs of a developer who's willing to actually develop and invest. And this developer particularly has a lot of in the, in the Performing Arts Center, which I, I didn't promote for most of the pieces of the project, but I do now. So much as my praises is blunt and not necessarily exclusively complimentary, I think it is very well deserved. The fundraising committee and Director Cummings have done a very good job pushing through. I also want to credit to the Aldermen who participated on steering committee and have really advocated for this internally and added that legislative guidance. And to the mayor, who's really shepherded this project as a project. So I feel much more, much more positively about this. I'm, I'm generally in favor of it. So I'm forward to the changes that are to come.
Thank you. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Chairman Dowd. I, I want to, basically, I'm going to do a me too of much of what Alderman Lopez had said. This has been a, a long time going. And a lot of people have worked really hard. The capital campaign, people have worked hard. The steering committee has worked hard. And I know I'm kind of patting myself on the back because I'm part of that, that committee. But the truth is that every, every step of the way, there have been very unique individuals as part of this committee, whether they had an expertise in the arts, expertise in building or whatever. There's been a lot of different people that have been part of this project. I think everyone has done an incredible job. I, I'm glad to see it going forward. I'm glad to see that we're finally hearing what the capital campaign has raised. They worked so hard in, in doing all of that. I also want to say about the, the parking garage. I know there was a comment that was made that we're building it for this, the apartment building. It is not. It's still going to be city used and so on. I have a constituent that owns a business in that area, and I've spoken to him quite a bit. The need for that parking was imperative for his business, as well as for all the other businesses that Alderman Lopez had mentioned. It was important for us to work with all of the abutters. We do this for a private home that's having a driveway put in or, or having an addition put on. I, I think it's right to discuss with the abutters. I think it's right to make them happy. It doesn't mean that we ignore the rest of the city. But the abutters are important, and I'm really glad to see that the city was able to work it out with them. So in, in, kind of in summation, I think this is a really great project. I hope you push it forward to the Board of Aldermen. I like the fact that it's kind of bundled together. I see how they go hand in glove. I see how the developer wanted that to, to happen in such a way. So please, you know, go forward and thank you very much.
Okay, Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I came here tonight prepared to, to say no to this. Only about 49% of the people in Ward 1 voted for this. And I said that I would work towards this. I'd work hard towards this. If we could get the $4 million, I didn't think we would. It looks like we might. So much work has been put into this. I can't see throwing it out at this point. It would be, it would be a sin to do this to downtown. Yes, the, the two projects work well together. The TIF ties it together. The TIF will improve that entire area. I mean, we'll be able to do all kinds of things, things that Ward 1 was looking for, like improving the, the method of getting into Main Street. All of the things that we could do with that are going to make a huge difference. And making sure that there is parking available, that was a big winner for me. And I really appreciate that. So between the parking and the $4 million and the TIF, tonight I will say yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jettie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, this is a, a very, very difficult, difficult vote for me. You know, taking the, first, the, the Performing Arts Center. Three years ago, this Performing Arts Center failed to get the 10 votes necessary from the Board of Aldermen to go forward. It was put on the ballot and for a, for the voters to vote on. And, you know, when I ran for Alderman the first time, I told people that I would vote the way the ward voted. And Ward 5 voted against this. You know, not by a lot, but they voted against it. Five out of the nine wards voted against it. Overall, it passed by 155 votes, 50.7% to 49.2%. So, you know, that, that indicates to me, that indicated to me that this was far from an overwhelming majority of people were in favor of this. Now, three years later, the, the cost has gone from 15.5 million to $25 million. And I don't know if, if this were put before the voters again, whether the people who voted for it then would still vote for it, or the people who voted against it would still vote against it. Who knows? It would be a speculation to try to guess what they would do. I'm sorry, am I, do I still have the floor?
No, go ahead.
So the, and at the time, there was the, the, the condition that, that $4 million be raised privately. And, you know, I, I take my hat off to Director Cummings and Deb Novotny and the, the fundraising committee. They, it looks like they have done it. Looks like they are coming up with the $4 million. And I congratulate them for that. However, you know, that $4 million was supposed to be put into an endowment, not used for construction, but held in an endowment. And the, the income from that $4 million, which was estimated to be about $160,000 a year, was going to be used to operate the Performing Arts Center. Then spectacle management came forward and said that they could operate it without getting paid anything. And, and as Alderman T. Boone pointed out, if, if the seating capacity was 750. So, you know, that's great that they've come forward, but in their memorandum of understanding, they said that the city should continue to provide for that $4 million endowment, and that the income, the $160,000, should be used to help market this Performing Arts Center. And spectacle said that they would match the money, but they were looking for the city to spend that $160,000 a year for marketing. Now, I don't know Now, I don't know if Mr. Lally is on the meeting tonight and whether that, that condition is, is, is still a condition. The memorandum of understanding was just a memorandum of understanding. It's not a contract. And I don't know if, if that's going to be in the contract or not. But that's, that's a concern if it is. If it is, then that four million dollars can't be used towards construction. It's got to be reserved in, in an endowment. The other thing is that I have, you know, looked at other performing arts centers in the state. You know, people point, you know, Mr., Mr. Grip, one of my constituents, you know, spoke in favor of this proposal and he talked about how his experience with the Capital Center for the Arts. He and I spoke earlier today about this. And I, I, I pointed out and he, he didn't disagree with me. The Capital Center for the Arts was undertaken for a lot less money. It cost them less than five million dollars. Granted, they already had a theater to begin with. We're starting from scratch, so I, I understand that. But, you know, their project was, cost a lot less and their project was funded by a nonprofit corporation of local businesses and local citizens, local political, academic, school leaders. All got together, formed a nonprofit corporation and raised the money. The city of Concord paid very little, contributed very little to the Capital Center for the Arts. The Music Hall in Portsmouth, a very similar model, a nonprofit corporation formed by local leaders, business people, government people, academic people, you know, people involved in the art community, formed a nonprofit corporation and raised the money necessary to renovate the palace, the Music Hall Theater in Portsmouth. And with, with not a whole lot of money coming from the city of Portsmouth. The same is true of, of the Colonial and Keen. So I, I look at these other projects and as much as I am in favor of a performing arts center, I, I struggle with the idea of, is it, is it fair for those of us who think the Performing Arts Center would be a great thing? Is it fair for us to ask the rest of the citizens in Nashua? You know, not everybody is in favor of this. And a lot of them will never set foot in this place. And, you know, is it fair to ask them to use their tax money to, to, you know, pay for a very, very, a very expensive project by in comparison to other projects in the state? On the, the parking garage, you know, we were originally presented and the developer presented us with a project of building this apartment building. And, you know, he told us he could not provide parking on site for the residents of this building. He said, and Director Cummings has also said that it's just economically unfeasible. It just, the numbers just don't, don't work. So he, he and the city came up with a, a plan to use the high street parking garage to provide the parking necessary. Now, I, I was one of the people who, you know, questioned about, you know, losing the school street parking lot. But the mayor and Director Cummings, you know, advocated very strongly that parking would not be a problem, that the parking garage, the high street parking garage was pretty empty at night. I, my office is right across the street. I use that garage. I, I can, you know, confirm the fact that it's pretty full during the day, at least before COVID. But at night, it was, it was empty. And, and I became convinced that the local businesses there, the casino, the River Casino, for example, you know, their patrons could go, could use the parking garage. There's a, there's a smaller parking lot next to School Street that's owned by the, by the Cadis Company that owns the building that the river leases space from. They have a, a parking lot. I don't know why the, why the, the deal couldn't be made for the river to rent space there. And the mayor and Director Cummings, you know, assured me that there was plenty of parking, alternative parking in that area. Parking was really not a problem. But then when we came to the, to the meeting to, to discuss it, you know, all of a sudden, they can't, you know, they had a solution for the parking problem. You know, we went from there was no, there is no parking problem to all of a sudden, we've, there is a problem, but we found a solution to it. And that's to build this garage underneath the apartment building at a cost to the citizens of two point five million dollars. Now, we're selling this land to the developer for nine hundred thousand. We've agreed to spend a hundred thousand in infrastructure improvements. So that, that's a net of eight hundred thousand. And now we're going to spend two point five million to build a parking garage, parking facility underneath the, the apartment building for two point five. That looks to me like a, a one point seven million dollar deficit. You know, the idea of, yeah, well, we, we'll, we'll talk about the TIF when, when that, that comes up. But I, I just, you know, combining this all, you know, for another eight million dollar bond, you know, considering the, the, the Performing Arts Center a total of twenty-five, a total of, a total bonding of twenty point five million. You know, I, I know treasurer for debt has, has, you know, provided us with, you know, a schedule of future bond issues and, and the, the money that's going to be required to pay for those bonds. And I, you know, I see that with the addition of these bonds and the Performing Arts Center, the, the total cost of paying for those bonds increases slightly from what we're paying now. And, you know, people could say, you know, it's like refinancing your mortgage. You know, you're used to paying a certain amount in debt service. And, you know, as your, as your mortgage principal goes down, you, you can, you can borrow more money and use it for various projects and, and still be paying about the same in, in, in interest costs. However, there are a lot of other projects that, when I look at the capital improvements program, I see a lot of other projects on that list. You know, I can think of, you know, we, we didn't, we, we didn't fully, you know, come up with a solution for the Public Works Department. They originally wanted to move the Street Department and the Parks and Recreation Department to that new facility that we're building at the landfill. And, and they, they left the Street Department where it is and they left Parks Department where, where it is because we couldn't afford, we were told, we couldn't afford that, you know, the extra bonding that it would cost. You know, if we didn't do this, maybe we could. The Street Department I see is, you know, still has a heating problem. They still need a, a, a new roof. They need a, a facility to wash their trucks and equipment. And, you know, we're going to be investing more money into that facility, which we are probably going to abandon a few years down the road when we move that to, to the landfill area. And the, the Parks Department is, you know, those facilities are, are, are really bad. You know, and there, there are a lot of other projects that are sitting, waiting for funding that we could probably look at instead of building this Performing Arts Center. So, you know, with that, I'll stop. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd, I think you muted.
Yeah, Alderman Lopez? And everyone, please be considerate of the time. It's getting very late, so go ahead.
I mean, for my personal recommendation, Alderman, there's no fill-up button here, so you don't have to share. But particularly, I object to some of the mischaracterization, how a TIF, and I know we will talk about it later, but there's no money proposed bond that exists right now if money is from development tax projects. So project, we're not, that exists right now, spending money that would be a product of the development and, and that development to proceed. So development, stop.
You're breaking up Alderman Lopez.
Don't get the project without the parking garage because the, have a problem. So by using the TIF money and the anticipated revenue development, that's where that deeply with the Performing Arts Center, we're not spending more money. We're, we're spending money that doesn't exist right now. If we actually do something with Alex Shoe Store, instead of leave these with regards to the way TIF money is, we're not asking taxpayers to do any more than what they automatically benefit from. Giving them two new amenities downtown, including, including Art Center. But I think that's important to remember. And I would also like to remind the board that while it is a performing arts center, is really an economic anchor. The purpose behind draw people downtown, this is succeed and thrive. And then wise past that diversity and that energy and that success around to the rest uses down area. So things that you're investing in downtown, you're really investing for the entire city's use.
Also, anyone else that would like to comment? Alderman Lou?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just for the record, I didn't hear anything that Alderman Lopez said. And I wish I had, but I wanted to just cover a couple of things. So the two and a fi- two and a half million dollar bond, first of all, I, I wanted to suggest that we separate these two issues. And I was going to ask if Corporation Counsel was here tonight, that he, that, that they provide how that's done. But the other thing I want to mention is the two and a half million dollar bond for the parking garage. You know, we never heard that, we never, I, I had never heard that the Melbourne Group felt their investment was contingent on, on the Performing Arts Center. I, I may have missed something, but I never heard that. I understand that, that a big concern was the casino and they have people coming and going with possibly cash. And they wanted surface parking. But we, seems to me they could hire, or we could hire a security guard for less than the, the bond maintenance cost for two and a half million dollars. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the description of the, of the construction of the parking garage was to do it on city property. And that did raise the question. I, it could be that it was just described. Is, the question is, are we, are we holding on to that property? Or is it going to be sold to, to the Melbourne Group? And at what point does that happen? Maybe it was described as a building, a, a parking garage on, on the city of Nashua property because it's going to be done before the, the construction starts. I'm not sure.
Is that a question you'd like answered?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for stopping me. Yes.
Just Director Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly and simply, we will be retaining the fee interest in the land. And what we would be doing is entering into a long-term lease agreement for the air rights. Thank you.
Much like they do in Boston and New York and other major cities. Any other questions, Alderman Lou?
If I could get some information on what that means, that would be helpful. I didn't see that anywhere.
What that means is we own the, the, the ground level and we sell the rights to the, the stories above ground level. It's done in major buildings in Boston, New York, Chicago. It's done all the time.
So I, I just wanted to comment on the earl- the last meeting when I was having a conversation about the, the TIF district. I'm just concerned that the TIF district actually has
Yeah, if I could just stop you there, the TIF is another, is in
Oh, we're not talking about that now?
Not talking about that now. We're just talking about the bond.
I think I'm through.
Anyone else? And then Alderman Cleaver?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think like a couple of the earlier speakers, I, I, I still have concerns and I'm still not clear on the economics of this plan, you know, whether they, they work out in, in our favor with, with the bonding. I want to be very clear and committed to the Arts Center. I think it's a, it's a great project. And, you know, even I would go as far as saying, look, the project has changed. The, the cost of the project is different now. And, you know, if it was, if we were looking for additional money for, for that through a bond or through a TIF, I would have, wouldn't have a, a tough problem supporting it. But we were, we were presented something much different, I think, at PEDC and even in front of the planning board as far as the sale of the school street property and what that looked like. I went back, I mean, there was no, no parking garage. I don't, and I've, I've been supportive of that development as well. I think it's a underutilized portion of downtown, which, you know, we've talked about a couple of different businesses or housing there. And I, I thought that the original plan that the Melbourne Lansing Group before was a, a good, a good plan for, for that area. But again, with, you know, losing the nine hundred thousand dollars anticipated cost, losing that tax revenue going forward, which was a large part of my support for the development of that. And I say losing it, you know, losing it to the general tax base. You know, I'm still, I'm, I'm concerned about that. Um, you know, I'm still, I'm, I'm concerned about this. I think that if we did the math, and I know, I understand it's tough to do the math, but. Um, if we were just to bond the additional five point five million dollars for the. Uh, performing arts center, I think in the long run, the city would come out, uh, ahead. Uh, and we would basically, you know, benefit from, from that development, the entire city, um, the general fund. Would, would benefit from that development. Uh, and then the last point I'll make with, um, um. You know, disappointed and troubled about is that. Uh, the infrastructure committee has been telling people for months now that we're doing this downtown parking study. Um, we're also engaging in, uh, the master plan. Uh, process starting now. Um, I'm, I'm disappointed that we are pushing this forward and, and not separating it. So it couldn't be part of that downtown parking study because I think at least at that point, we would have. Professionals who would be able to give us opinion, uh, in opinion and say, yes, this is a worthwhile project. Uh, or no, you know, the parking downtown in this area is sufficient. I understand that the businesses down there are concerned. Um, as are, um, you know, residents all over the city. When there's new development, no one knows exactly how it's going to affect. Um, their, their interests, but, um, it's just, it seems to me like we're, we're. Putting up this two point five million dollars without really knowing, um, whether it's necessary. So. I'm still open to, to listening to everybody, but at this point I'm, I'm having a tough time, uh, in committee, uh, supporting. The, uh, this as it's presented. Thank you.
Alderman Cleaver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to reiterate that I am strongly in favor of the performing arts center. Strongly in favor and I, I would. Back the bonding for that immediately. However, I, I say again, the, the fact that they're tied together creates problems. And so I have. Uh, I have a motion. I would like to move to separate the question and make this two different issues.
I don't think Corporation Council, I mean, these things, two items are because of the TIF are tied pretty close together. I mean, uh, you can make that motion, but. Actually, you're not part of the committee either.
Committee, you have to wait till it comes to full board.
Um, that's why.
All right, well, as a follow-up then, I have some objections. I would like to list a few objections to the school street program.
Go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, uh, it's. Developing only one bedroom and, and, uh, and, uh, s- sweets, studio suites. As in, 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 uh, by definition, this is for young couples and, and, uh. Youngsters only, millennials and so on and so forth. There's no provision for families or others. So it's, it's a form, in my view, a form of, uh, gentrification of the downtown. Created for a select group. And not including others. So, uh, the, the other thing is that if you do the math on the space available within that building, within. The parameters of what's been described. It's like trying to put a bushel of potatoes into a one peck bag. It doesn't work because there are just too many units. For this, with the space available. Uh, so I, I have concerns about that. And the design doesn't seem to have amenities involved either, like laundry and fitness room and. Offices and so on and so forth. So. That's, that's a design issue. Also, as, as a, as a building in the downtown, it, it's, it's not. Attractive in any way, shape or form, doesn't fit into the architecture. The downtown would be a detriment rather than, uh, an addition. And I, I don't, I don't see it as being a draw in any way, shape or form. And the, uh, the developer has. Has opportunities to, uh. Do things like solar panels for green energy. No mention of that or green energy of any kind. For example, there could be a rooftop parklet with an observation deck and so on and so forth. Available to the public during the day by express elevator, things like that, creative use of the space. So it becomes an attraction rather than a detriment for the downtown. And other, other green spaces not available, so the rooftop green space would be an ideal situation. Uh, financially has been pointed out nine hundred thousand minus two hundred. Uh, two point five million to three million, uh, three. Because there's our, also parking, uh. Parking amenities that are going to have to be developed along street level. As the mayor's pointed out, that's going to cost money also. So it's a losing proposition from a financial standpoint. Whereas the, the builder is going to have. Uh, rental coming in, rental money coming in in perpetuity. The city does, doesn't get anything except promised. Uh, future tax revenue, which may or may not be enough. Uh, most importantly. There should be a minimum, in my view, of twenty percent affordable housing. And that is seems to be a non-starter with anybody, including the city officials and including the developer. And for obvious financial reasons, I'm sure, but to have the ci- city property not used properly. In terms of providing housing for those who need it is, is a big mistake in my view. So parking is still an issue and in fact, we're still going to be losing parking spaces from businesses and. In addition, the business disruption is going to be enormous for that area, both in construction and after. So that's, those are my objections. The school street, as I say, I'd like to separate the two issues completely and, and address them. Uh, individually for, for those reasons. Thank you very much.
You know, Alderman Clemens and then Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. So, eh, you know, it's, it's interesting, um, the crossroads that we're, we're at this evening. You know, three years ago, we voted, the, the city voted to move forward with this project and. Several, uh, things have changed, uh, since that time. Um, you know, Alderman, um, McCarthy, who was the leader on this, uh, passed away mid, um. Mid-project, um. That kind of derailed a little bit the capital campaign. Um, that, that got back on track. They needed a little bit more time. Um, back in February, we gave them that more, we gave them that extra time, the, um. Uh, the. You know, whether or not we were going to get to that, you know, we, they, they needed the time to do that. And then, of course, we were hit with COVID nineteen. Uh, and because of that, the new market tax credits were put into question whether or not those were going to come around because of the government was spending money on other things. Um, related to that, plus that put a hinder on, uh, some of the, the fundraising. A- and of course, we went through some design changes as, um, uh, was previously, um, mentioned. So there was a lot of difficulties, a lot of obstacles, um, that have come along the way over these last.
Point of order if I can?
Excuse me?
Uh, Al- Alderman, uh, Chairman Dowd?
Is it a point of order based on what Alderman Clemens is saying?
Yes, I believe so. Isn't, uh, Alderman Clemens talking about the, the, uh, performing arts center, uh, as, uh, part of the? Bond?
Yes.
There, there, there's two parts to the bond. There's money for the parking garage and money for the performing arts center. The thing we're not talking about is the TIF.
Okay. I, I. I can correct it. Thank you.
So it took a long time to get to where, where we were at, uh, but we're finally here. The four million dollars has been raised. Um, and we are faced with, um, the legislation that is before us. And yes, the legislation that is before us does contain bond money for the school street. Um, project as well to raise, um. Uh, the lot. Uh, or to raise the structure there so that they can put the lot underneath the building. And so therefore, you know, I can understand from a point of view that. Uh, you may find it difficult, um, to understand why these two projects were tied together. The thing about it is, is that. I believe that the, like many of us who have spoken, that the extra five million dollars. Uh, for the performing arts center is absolutely necessary, uh, and we need to, to have that. But I also fundamentally believe that the lifting of the, uh, building and putting the parking lot underneath that building. Is also, uh, essential. Because the neighbors, uh, and the business owners that are around that. Uh, area. Came out and spoke very forcefully that they wanted to keep that parking lot. And it was incumbent upon the city to come up with a compromise. And make sure that that development still went forward. And the compromise was that, that we had to, uh, figure out a way. To, uh, lift that building and put the spaces underneath. So. The reason that the, that these two pieces are together is because we can do one bond. For the two separate, uh, projects. Now I understand, um. Alderman Cleaver's, um. Hesitance towards, you know, the actual aspect of what is being built there. And some of the design elements in that thing. I'm not an architect and I'm certainly not a person that. Um, would ever be accused of having good design case. Um, however, I, I do have to say that I have full confidence. That the, the developer knows what they are doing. And that they can add substance to our downtown and add. Apartments that are going to be economically viable. And affordable. It's not just young people who will be attracted to those apartments. I can tell you that for a fact. That many, uh, older folks, single individuals will also be attracted to that. Uh, and want to have a smaller place to retire to and live in, in a nice downtown. Uh, like in Nashua. It's not going to be restricted housing. It's going to be market housing. So it'll be open to anybody who wants to live. Um, downtown. Um, in a one bedroom or a studio. So I think that, you know, we, we really need to think about everything that's before us here. We also need to think about how it's tied in to the legislation that we will be talking about. So I think. From, from my perspective. We have a developer who is going to. Um, build something, build these apartments, uh, downtown. We're taking into account the fact that, uh, the butters and the businesses around it needed the parking underneath. To, uh, stay so that they could be successful. And lastly, we all know that we needed to increase the amount of money that it takes. Um, to build the performing arts center. What I am happy to say is that the bond will be completely paid for. And we will get into that when we start discussing the legislation on the TIF district. Um, so I think, um, for all of those reasons. I'm going to be supporting this and I would not support untying them. Uh, and the reason being is that is when we get to the TIF district legislation, it will become obvious why. It is important to keep them together. Thank you.
Alden O'Brien?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't going to comment, but I'm going to try to be brief to keep within the confines of this meeting. But I would be amiss if I didn't speak. First, I would like to recognize Mr. Keating. Uh, and I was, uh, happy to hear the testimony of Foster. I do understand the needs of affordable housing in the city. However, when you come down affordable housing, it's like real estate. And when it comes down to real estate, we all hear the term location, location, location. Is this the area that would be best benefited by having affordable housing in that vicinity? One, we could have the current developer and his plans go for something more of an uptick. Affordable housing, I support Mr. Keating and his advocacy of it. And don't think we as Aldermen may not have a second bite at the apple. Apple. As we go down the road in the future, if all goes well and we do build an additional middle school. Uh, what is going to be done with Elm Street? Can that discussion come up for affordable housing at that particular time? It may, and perhaps it should. But when we build something such as the performing arts center, we don't build it for the year twenty twenty or the year twenty twenty-one. We build it for the future. And for that future, we will get, I think, a lot of, uh, potential tax revenue, enhance our downtown. And that's why the, uh, the location is so key. So spending money at this particular time for this project, we're spending it on not the performing arts center. But for the future of the downtown and for Nashua. Now, being chairman of the econ- uh, of the, uh. Uh, infrastructure committee, I'm glad, uh, my co-chair on, uh, mentioned that the parking. But let's look at what is happening with the parking. Yes, we have had COVID and because of COVID. We shut down basically Main Street and brought it down to only two lanes of travel. And does anybody hasn't mentioned how many parking spaces has been? You know, eliminated to enhance the, uh, enhance the public dining that our residents seem to enjoy. Yet, as an Alderman and as chairman of the infrastructure, perhaps maybe you people have. But I haven't, I've always heard the inklings of parking, parking, parking. Yet when we came up with the outdoor dining proposal, I haven't heard really. Any rumblings or anything close to the rail on, on the parking issue. Should we go for that parking study in the future? Absolutely. I mean, we have more other neighborhoods that we need to. Take a look at than we, uh, than just the downtown. So I do hope that does come to fruition. But I think with this project of going with the parking underneath. Uh, the mi- uh, Melbourne, uh, Lansing development, I think that's going to increase the parking downtown. So it's further best to stay with that. And whenever the city in Asher builds any type of infrastructure. Such as a fire station or perhaps maybe, uh, as somebody brought up, the Public Works Garage. We really, those are housing, uh, city facilities. You know, what economic development does City Hall actually gear into the downtown other than being a place to work? And it's the same thing with the Public Works Building. It's a place where they can have good quality offices, which doesn't exist right now. And safe work environment, but it doesn't really add to the economic development into a community. It's part of the day-to-day infrastructure. It's like owning a home. If you don't improve on your own personal infrastructure or painting your house or doing or doing the gutters. Your house is going to fall apart. And in some places in the city, we do have buildings that are, are past their prime. So, uh, it's something that we should look, uh, to do. And as far as the parking lot on the school street. Uh, this is like a good compromise. I was working with Mr. Rafferty on this and with others and everything. I think it's a darn good compromise. And let's remember, what was the original school street area? And let's remember, what was the original school street area? That was residential. So what we're doing right now is turning what was hot top, turning that back into a residential community and the bonuses increasing the parking. So uh I would like to end it there and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez, do you have something new to add?
Yeah, um so uh one of the things that has come to us uh and was referenced in the public comment regarding the housing was a petition uh that was circulated among Brontine residents. And just wanted to point out, uh based on some of the comments made by other uh aldermen that that, I mean, that was a little bit misguided. It was not communicated to me in any way they were doing that. But uh all of the plans that we've seen on School Street do not include family-sized housing. They include mostly one bedrooms and studio. So I wouldn't have gone a large number of people in public housing and suggested that they could move into that apartment, at least responsibly. Um so I that's unfortunate, and I think it's a little bit of a distraction here. Um when it was said pre that this building shape, because it didn't have family apartments in it and would have all bedrooms and studios, therefore would be gentrifying the community. I disagree with that entirely because the building next Mary's is units apartment, the nearest low-scale development, the latest house, which is all bedrooms and um mostly studio apartments. But it actually does fit the character of the neighborhood. Um I can't really speak to the onsite amenities like laundry rooms or um fitness rooms. But I do know there's a laundromat a block away that basically everyone in the other adjacent apartments all uh would be like used. Um and I think we have to be realistic about how many of these amenities we can expect a developer to put on a lot while keeping that a viable project. I mean, and green space on the roof of a seven-story building would be great, but I don't think find a developer who will do that. And so right now, we parking lot. The project before us gives us a parking lot plus a building on top of it. If you disagree with the building on top of, probably would still parking lot in order to get a budding neighbors to agree. So I don't think those two should be separated from the performing arts um center. I also question whether we could easily do that or not because we just had the public or the public hearing for the two as a co-joined bond. So if we change it, I would guarantee that not only would we have to a separate set of hearings, but that would probably deliver both projects at a time where neither project would really benefit from such a play.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Anyone else? Alderman Willshire?
Thank you. I just want to say that I learned recently at a a meeting of the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority that um they have a plan in place for folks who might be displaced temporarily to uh the new development going on there, but they will have a place to come back to that will be new and and nice. Um so the Housing Authority hires relocation specialists that, you know, they they do this all the time and no one's going to be without housing. They they will either put them in another housing unit or give them a Section Eight voucher that they can use and um and help them find housing. Not just say, here you go, here's a voucher, you know, because we all know that there's less than a half percent vacancy rate. So there is no housing and there's no place. But the Housing Authority has assured their residents over there that, you know, no one's going to get stuck, you know, and it might be a little bit inconvenient, but they're working with people far ahead of time to make sure that, you know, that the inconvenience is as little as possible and and they're working with them. So I I don't think those people should be concerned. Um, you know, that that they're going to be out because they won't. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to make one quick comment and then wrap this up. Um, I can tell you that having attended most of the meetings on the performing outside, they have an outstanding architect and an outstanding con uh building contractor. And I think the project is well-planned and uh uh will go ahead smoothly. The other thing is, is two things I want to do while I'm still resident of Nashville. One is attending the grand opening of the Performing Arts Center. And the other is riding the first train service that we have that returns to New Hampshire. Having said that, uh, the motion on the floor is for our twenty. Excuse me?
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Dow. May I speak?
Yes.
Okay, it's Alderman Karen. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I I I won't keep you because I know um I'm not on this committee, but I have to agree with several of the aldermen. I have some real concerns about this tied together. And the other thing that no one has brought up, for the last seven months, we have been in lockdown. People have not been able to go out, so obviously parking is not an issue. But the other thing is, what is going to happen down the road? What is going to happen when we're working on our budget for next year? These are things that we really have to think about before we approve an eight-million-dollar bond. And I, when you get to the TIF part of this, I would certainly like um treasurer for debt to give us an overview of how many TIFs we have in this community right now. And also to remind people that in March seventh, almost two years ago, we were supposed to have some buildings going up or be redefined for working-class people who need housing. So I think we need to think about this as a whole. I'm, I I can't support something that I don't know what's going to happen down the line. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, let Alderman Karen speak because she hasn't spoke before, but I'd like to move this on to a vote. Um, if I could have the uh Alderman O'Brien call a roll. The motion is for approving final passage of R twenty oh seventy-one by roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien votes yes. Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
We have.
We have uh eight yeas and two nays.
Motion carries. Okay, next item is R twenty oh seventy-six and we will be, I'd like a motion to table. It needs to be tabled because it requires a public hearing. So we cannot hear that this evening. So if somebody would like to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table until a public hearing is scheduled on the on R dash twenty dash zero seven six.
Okay, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien votes yay. Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
And Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
There we go. Mr. Chairman, ten yeas, zero nays.
Okay, R twenty oh seventy-six is tabled till after a public hearing. New business ordinances.
Uh we have one before us this evening is O dash twenty dash zero three O. Adopting a tax uh tax increment financing TIF Development District under RSA one sixty-two dash K and NRO two ninety-five dash eleven. The School Street TIF and Tax Increment Financing Development Program and Financing Plan for the new TIF. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to recommend final passage by roll call.
Okay. Director Cummings, would you like to talk to this first or you want to just open it up?
Uh, I just very, very briefly, uh, Mr. Chairman, I want to just provide a quick overview relative to, you know, the TIF uh plan that's that's before the committee. Um, I I I will keep my comments um uh short. So essentially, a tax increment financing is a a tool that, you know, every state um and municipality authorizes in uh in here in the United States as a municipal financing tool, uh particularly to spur redevelopment um and and development in areas that are that are struggling. Uh that that is essentially um one of the reasons why we we decided to pursue this this mechanism, this tool. Um, the, there is essentially no class, no taxes collected on the on the school street parking lot right now because it's publicly owned. When the time comes um and there's full valuation on the on the property, um it will collect somewhere in the order of magnitude of just over four hundred thousand dollars. Um, we can take that uh those 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 revenues and we can um dedicate it for certain purposes when you create a TIF. Um and you can spend those dollars within a TIF district as the plan outlines. It's a very concise area. Um, we could use it for School Street, West Holler Street for for um I'm sorry, West Pearl Street for the Performing Arts Center for for various streetscaping type type needs. Uh but ultimately, the 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 thought process is for it to be project-specific for it to support the parking structure um that, you know, we have discussed um tonight. Um, that would allow for a little more than fifty parking spaces um to be publicly available. And then in addition, closing the gap on the on the Performing Arts Center um project. So um the the bond, I believe, was for um twenty-five years on uh TIFs can go up to forty years. We're recommending that this just be uh in place while the bond is is currently out. Um, there would be a lot of benefits um to the city if this project was to move forward. The bond would uh eventually be paid off. All the new tax dollars would come in. Um, the bond goes down over time, so there's additional tax revenue that would be received um as the years go on. We need housing. We've talked about that previously. Um, as well as just investment in a in a low uh income area, which this this area is. And so investment begets investment. Starting to get that type of investment going will help uh spur other projects. Um, that's something that the mayor alluded to earlier. And so for all those reasons why you have the TIF um uh legislation before you this evening, it was a product of a compromise. When we first started out on the conversation about developing on the school street um parking lot, um there was no anticipated uh parking associated with that program. Uh however, uh through a lot of discourse and and dialogue, uh particularly with the neighbors, you know, we understood that the concern and the need. And so um we asked the developer if there was a way to redesign the project. Um, he indicated that there there would be, uh but the costs associated with the providing public parking is not something that the project could support. Um, so uh knowing that constraint, it just seemed logical to use a TIF-type mechanism as a way of uh um, you know, moving the moving the project forward. So that's a quick overview. I wanted to just quickly um provide you all and I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
All right. Anybody who would like to speak to this legislation, Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. Um, so you know, obviously, this is uh this legislation is tied to the legislation that we approved or that the committee recommended to approve um previously, which were the the two uh, well, it's one bond, but the two projects. Um, and here is why I wholeheartedly support uh the the TIF and why I I voted yes um on the or partly why I voted yes on the two bonds. Um, this, the question was asked earlier and I asked a question. Will this raise anybody's taxes who is paying property taxes now? And the answer to that question is no. And here is why. The, all of the estimated revenue that is going to come from the district, the TIF district, is coming from the new building that is within it, that is going to be constructed on the School Street property. So all of the tax revenue that is going to be raised is going to be raised by that uh project. So no, there's not nothing there now. And the um owner, so no one's paying any taxes. So once that development is built, it will be assessed and the money that comes from that building uh will pay for the two bonds, the one for the parking structure and the other uh actually for the for the Performing Arts Center. So it's 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 interesting to me because the um if you'd asked me, you know, a year ago, whether or not I would support number one, the School Street project, or number two, doing um additional money for uh the Performing Arts Center, I might have told you no on both. But the fact of the matter is, it isn't every day that we get an opportunity to build new housing in the city that's going to be relatively, yes, it's market rate, but relatively affordable, in a great location downtown. And on top of all of that, have it pay for itself and have it pay for the Performing Arts Center so that no taxes are being raised for citizens um so that we can do this project that we've been promising them. So here's where we're at tonight. We are at the point where we've raised the four million dollars for the Performing Arts Center. We've just recommended adding to the bond uh earlier. And now we have a mechanism to pay for it without costing the city of Nashua anything else. That's a beautiful place to be, a beautiful place to be. Is it perfect? Is it everything that we wanted it to be? No, it's not. I I wanted a, I wanted to see a hotel built in that location. I wanted to uh see that happen, you know. Uh, some of the 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 aldermen wanted to see more amenities, different things like that. No project is ever going to be one hundred percent what we all wanted it to be. But the beautiful thing about this project, particularly in the School Street one, is that it is a, it is absolutely the product of listening. This community and and this TIF uh proposal is the um product of listening, listening to taxpayers. So let me explain that. So first off, as was mentioned earlier, about half the city voted yes and half the city voted no on the Performing Arts Center. Fair enough. I would say that the city's probably still fifty-fifty split on that. The second thing is, we uh we need housing in the city. This project proposes to to build it, more housing. We need a way to increase the amount of money to make the Performing Arts Center viable. This project does it. This TIF district does it. We listened to the neighbors who wanted to make sure that we maintain that School Street parking lot. This project does it. This project is the best way forward for the Performing Arts Center and getting it done. We have one chance, folks, to to make this happen, one chance. And the beautiful thing about it is, and and this is what's great, is by doing this TIF district, we can go proud is by doing this TIF district, we can go proudly back to the taxpayers and say, not only are we going to, to, we, we come up with a solution for the Performing Arts Center. Not only did we raise the $4 million, but it's not going to cost you any money. Not going to cost you any tax money. I think that's pretty remarkable. I really, really think that's remarkable. And there's a, and, and my hat goes off to Director Cummings for coming up with that idea. Because I'm telling you right now, that will ease the 50% of the population in this city who worry about their taxes going up because of the project. Won't happen. We have it figured out. So for all of those reasons, we have spent three years coming to this moment. And now it's time to pull the trigger and, and do this. The day has come and here we are, and now it's time to get it done. And I'm very excited, very happy to support this. And, uh, I hope my colleagues will, will also do that. Thank you.
Yeah, just one thing I want to point out, let's not, this has nothing to do with, with the, the two elements of money. This TIF can, could just support the Performing Arts Center if it ended up that way. And, and although we just passed the, to, to cover both, but, um, I would not want to be against the TIF because of the parking garage. Um, the TIF could end up just being used for the Performing Arts Center. And it, it's, it's, uh, a viable way to do that and get things going. And if we're going to meet a closing date. Um, so I'll take additional comments, but please everybody be cognizant of the time. Alderman Lopez and Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, so particularly I'm in favor of this TIF because it's very common that lower income neighborhoods don't get representation when it comes to funding and infrastructure need, and the TIF district basically guarantees that. Um, it means the money, revenue that we create these development projects is going to go back to, um, those neighborhoods and that developments. Um, I'm in favor of the TIF project. Um, I like having both, uh, projects in, as, as was pointed out earlier. Exactly know what our, coming in our revenue is going to be, uh, next year. And so we have to be a little bit cautious. And the bonding mechanism is the best way to see development project forward that will fit this economically in many, many ways without having to commit to biting off a huge money to pay for it right out of the gate. So I'd rather us plan ahead and use the TIF the way that it is designed to taxpayer contributions low and keep projects paid for themselves doing that. Um, and I would like to continue developing economic opportunities for people that are uh, for income neighborhoods that keep that money within those neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thanks. Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, so I, 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 I recognize that, um, Director Cummings, uh, you know, has come up with a, a, a very clever plan. Uh, you know, he, um, you know, 20 years from now, as we look back, we may, you know, see him as a, a visionary along with the mayor and Alderman Clemens and, and, uh, and you and the rest of the people who are supporting this. And, uh, I may be looked upon less favorably, um, but I have a couple, I have some questions. In the, uh, in the summary provided by the legal department, I don't know if Attorney Leonard is still with us or not. Um, but in the summary, um, the legal department, uh, says that, um, that the Alderman will provide reasonable opportunity to the county commissioners and school board to meet with the governing body, that's Board of Aldermen. Uh, in, in our, and to be, um, uh, made aware of, uh, of what the, um, the ramifications of this, uh, TIF district might be. Uh, and I'm, I'm wondering, you know, has that, has that been done? Are the county commissioners aware of this? Have they been invited to a meeting or, uh, I don't think they're here tonight. Is, is there anyone that can answer that question?
Attorney Leonard is still with us.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a little past my, my bedtime. I, you know, I'm a farmer, so, um, the, um, yes, my understanding is that, uh, notice has been sent out as required by law to both the county commissioners and the school department.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, so on another, uh, another point, uh, so the TIF district, uh, as I understand it, and I think, I think this is accurate, the, the TIF district, um, you know, takes whatever the, uh, whatever taxes are being generated by these properties within the TIF district. Uh, now, and those tax, whatever the, whatever amount of taxes that that might be continue to flow into the general fund. But, uh, going forward, uh, whatever increase in the tax, um, revenue from those properties would go into the, uh, into, into the TIF and would be used, um, for, for the benefit of the, uh, the properties in, in the TIF district. Uh, so as, as I understand it, um, you know, the tax revenue, you know, that increase in tax, I mean, we've been told that the Performing Arts Center is going to increase the property values of, of downtown, which would include the, the properties in this TIF district. So the, so there, um, I'm assuming that that means that their values, their, their assessed values will increase, which will generate more income and that increased income, uh, will, will go into this, uh, TIF. Uh, the bulk of the, of the money, of course, will come from the, uh, the development of the school street property, this new apartment building, which, um, has been estimated to be about $400,000 a year. And as Alderman Clemens has pointed out, you know, all of this money will be used to, um, to pay, uh, the debt service on the bonds. And so from his point of view, these bonds are not costing the, uh, the taxpayers, uh, anything. However, I would like to point out that another way of looking at this is that if the apartment building was built as originally proposed by the developer, uh, without the parking garage, we, we wouldn't be, uh, issuing a bond of two and a half million. Um, and if we didn't issue another bond of five and a half million to close the gap, as they say, uh, on the Performing Arts Center, that $400,000 in additional tax revenue would go into the general fund. And would help pay for schools, fire department, police department, uh, Board of Public Works, um, the, um, the, uh, you know, the different, um, services that the city is providing. Now, I'm assuming that some of the residents of this new apartment, apartment building could very well be children who are going to need schooling. Uh, and with this TIF, we are, we are taking all of the tax money that the apartment building will generate and using it to pay for these bonds. Uh, none of it will be used to pay for, uh, educating these kids, if there are any, uh, or, or the other expenses. And when you say it's not going to cost the, you know, the taxpayers anything for these bonds, you're taking away $400,000 from the general fund, which the taxpayers are going to have to make up for. So, uh, uh, I, I understand, you know, the way that Alderman Clemens is looking at this and it's, I, I'm not saying he's wrong about the way he's looking at it, but, uh, there is a different way to look at it. And, um, we, which, uh, which is that we, we are taking $400,000. Uh, we're asking the taxpayers to pay an additional $400,000 to, to maintain the city services that, that, that this new apartment building, the money that this new apartment building, the tax revenue that this new apartment building would generate is not going to be available for. So, thank you.
Alderman Denso?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple, uh, I guess, questions if people are still available to answer them on the TIF. So on the, again, on the, um, on the legislation, on the fiscal note, it says that over a five-year period, uh, it's expected the, the increment within the district, uh, could range from 1.4 to 1.5 million dollars. Is that the, is that the additional, uh, value that will be captured under the TIF? Or is that the total, uh, amount of tax revenue for the properties within the TIF?
Who wants to take that one? Director Cummings?
Yes, thank, yep, thank you. Thank you, uh, uh, Ms. Chairman. Um, I believe it is specific to just the school street project. And the reason being is because we don't, we don't every year increase values. We do it on average every five years. So we don't, we don't know of any new development or growth happening. And, and so therefore it is just going to be predicated on, on the current project.
Okay. And so again, I think it's just the, the language is confusing me a little bit in the fiscal note. But so that, that would mean that the, not that we would, not that the TIF would collect an additional 1.5 million in taxes, but just that the value of the land would increase, the value of the building would increase 1.5 million?
Well, well, essentially the TIF districts, the TIF would generate approximately 1.5. And that's due to, uh, the engine that spins that off being the school street project. If that, if that makes more sense.
It, it does. I guess where I'm a little confused that there's, there's other properties that are included in the TIF. And so it were, you're not saying that those properties are necessarily going to contribute all that much to the TIF. It's the school street property.
Go as far as saying they're not, they're not on the horizon to be contributing really anything unless they take on a, a new development type project. And I'm not aware of anything happening.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
That Alderman Cle?
Uh, thank, thank you, Chairman Dowd. Um, I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear and I know I'm not a voting member, but I want to do clarification. Um, the apartments that we're looking at are going to be, to the best of my knowledge, are just going to be like one bedroom apartments and, um, studio apartments. So they probably would not have children in them. But, um, putting that aside, um, the, the TIF, the life of the TIF is only supposed to be as long as the bond exists, correct? And that the monies generated beyond the payment of the, um, the bond would go into the general fund. So it's not like the riverfront TIF where monies are going to keep collecting so that there could be an ongoing, um, taking care of that area as the riverfront is, is going. This is slightly different. Am I correct on that? I don't know who should answer that.
Director Cummings?
Yes, uh, so what I'm going to, this is the same point has come up two or three times now. So I will double check what I'm about to say, but yes, what you just said is correct. Is, is the, the, the idea or thought process, unless this board wants to do something differently. But the idea is for just to cover the debt of the bond. And then any excess revenue would be transferred to the general fund.
Thank you. That answers my questions.
I just want to point out that if we have, if we pass the bond, 5.5 million for the Performing Arts Center, we're either going to pay the debt service out of regular taxes or it's going to be covered under the monies from the TIF. Either way, you're going to be paying for the debt service. So it's not like, you know, we just do away with the debt service. Um, do you have something new, Alderman Lou?
Yes, I do. May I speak?
Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to point out that we have to consider, um, that there are parcels in this TIF district that are currently exempted from taxes. And those exemptions, those properties will end up, um, if, okay, so as we decide when, um, Elm Street becomes available, as we decide to move our, um, public, uh, some of the nonprofits or, um, a nonprofit or something like that to Elm Street. And the property becomes sellable or rather, um, valued or taxable. Then the, then the, um, delta between the taxable amount or the assessed amount and what they were paying in taxes will all go to the, um, TIF district. My concern with that is that the TIF district, um, plan says, well, let me just say, the legislation, 162K, that deals with the, um, TIF district, says that it pay off, um, it may, it, it will pay off principal and interest on bonds. And it may pay additional to the principal, but it doesn't have to. So my concern is that for 20 or 30 years, I don't know what the terms of our bonds are. But for that period of time, we essentially have a district that, that gets special treatment, let's just say. Um, and I don't think under the present, um, the present mayor, that would happen. But we're talking about 20 years down the road. And when I first, uh, started as older woman, I, I asked, I, well, I had a conversation with some of the city, uh, staff and I said, you know, my district feels like they're paying more in taxes than what can being put back into their, uh, the ward. And the response I got was that, that's a crazy, or that's not a very reasonable, um, objection and that, you know, it's really a citywide thing. But my, my feeling is that, that, uh, tax increment financing district does do that. It, it segregates the increase in taxes. And, I mean, I think it, it, it has very good possibilities, but I think there are negative possibilities also to consider. And those are that, um, you know, we have a lot of, um, we have a lot of vacant lot, not in this particular agreement, in this particular.
Might be getting off, do we have a specific question that you want to ask?
No, I don't. I have an opinion. I'm trying to.
As you, you were saying that if somebody is a nonprofit and they move out of the TIF and the building sells and the prof, for profit goes in there, yes, they're going to pay taxes. And those taxes would go, at least part of them anyway, would go to the TIF. Um, because the nonprofit that was eligible for not paying taxes moved. The property, the property.
That wasn't a question. I was trying to, uh, I was trying to speak an opinion, but if you feel I'm mis, uh, informed, then that's fine. I'll stop.
It was just a little confusing. Anyone else?
Well, you could have waited until I stopped and just asked the question.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
No.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien votes yes. Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
No.
We have eight yays and two nays.
Motion carried. Okay, I've talked to the people involved with the next three items that were tabled in committee, and they will stay on the table. They're not ready to be discussed, so general discussion. Seeing no one, public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, remarks by Alderman?
I think, I think Mr. Keating wanted to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Keating, did you have something? You're on mute.
Yeah, I'm not sure that this is appropriate at this point, because it's about the parking, and to clarify a point, that, from the Bronstein perspective, we weren't speaking about the difficulties or the payment of the parking, this parking needed for that area in terms of School Street, it was specifically targeted to say, the city is now paying for that money, and that specifically, we were asking for the consideration for apartments to be created within that that would allow people to move from Bronstein there, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, we certainly believe there's needing of parking, but have questions that the city would be paying for the parking rather than development itself. Thank you.
Okay. Remarks by Alderman? Alderman Wilshire?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everyone, you know, I would name names, but if I forget someone, I'd feel really bad, but everyone who had a role in getting this project to this point, yes, even you treasurer for debt. So, I just want to thank everyone for their, you know, understanding what the neighbors needed, understanding, you know, the scope pretty much of what needed to be done. I think it's a good project, I think bundling them makes the most sense, it shows the city's investment in their downtown, too. So, that's all I have, but thank you, everyone who worked on this.
Anyone else? Alderman Lou?
I hope that, you know, as an older woman, I could get five minutes of time to talk. So, thank you.
Okay, there's no need for non-public. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn by roll call.
Okay.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien? Votes yes. Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we have ten yays, zero nays.
Okay, return at 10:38 PM.
Good night, everybody.